Are going to go ahead and call to order our January seventh work session board meeting. And it is, I think according to my clock, six oh one, six oh two. Uh, Dr. Thomas, if you would be role call for us.
Ma'am. Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Gallagher.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Jaeger.
Here.
Dr. Dykman.
Here.
Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Gant.
Here.
Attorney Hall.
Here.
And Dr. Maddox.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. So we do have a core and present. We'll move forward with item number two on our agenda, which is to amend or adopt the agenda. The floor is open.
I move that we adopt the agendas presented.
A second.
Okay, so that was a motion by Ms. Davis and a second by Dr. Dykman. Any questions or discussion about that? Okay. Dr. Thomas, if you would take role on the action to adopt the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher.
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Dr. Dykman.
Yes.
Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Gant.
Yes.
Attorney Hall.
Yes.
And Dr. Maddox.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So that motion passes. Our agenda is printed before us. It's also a public document. Uh, we'll move forward with item number three, which is our informational items. Uh, we'll start with three point one, and this is our early head start, head start policy council meeting minutes. Are there any um questions or further discussion around the information that was provided for us?
I did read them. Thank you, Karen.
Yep. Thank you for this information, Karen.
Very good. Round two.
All right, we'll move forward with item three, two, which is our SLOSS monthly report. Any additional information? I also know that Dr. Jaeger sent um uh sent us a snapshot or just some information as well, but any questions or further discussion?
Just to clarify, this report is from District Operations, right? And that's the actual inventory of all of the projects, if I'm not mistaken, that I read.
Yes.
This is that report. Are we looking at something else?
Yes, that's this is that report.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
And I think in terms of the SLOSS report, as as people who are unemployed are able to sustain themselves with a little bit of federal money, it may even go up even more.
All right. We'll move forward with item three, three. I didn't have um a um a Career Academy report in my packet, so I don't, I don't want to assume that was the case for other people.
Yes, we did not have a report from them this month. Um, the last meeting it appears that was held was in October. Uh, so we have not received a recent report, Dr. Gant. Um, but I spoke to Ms. Palmer and Mr. Gaskins earlier today, and we will be reaching out to um find out when they are having their next meeting, but they did not submit a report this month.
So I did see a calendar posting for the Career Academy or a Career Academy Board, the Advisory Board meeting. Is that different from the report that we're talking about here? I mean, is that the same group that would generate the report that we're talking about here?
It should be, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they they have one scheduled for January.
So that we should have a report for our next meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move forward with our board community reports. And I do apologize, I always sort of lump Dr. Jaeger's SLOSS. I think SLOSS is one large category, um, so I may have confused myself and others. Uh, but Dr. Jaeger, this is where the SLOSS report is, but before that, our Athens Area Community Foundation. Um, I don't see any information um that was uploaded as far as a report, but I am, I do want to just open the floor briefly. Um, because I know we've been on break, so.
Yeah, our next meeting is January twenty first, so I'll upload it once we have our meeting.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Maddox. Item four, two, which is our community oversight and SLOSS report, Dr. Jaeger.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gant. Uh, I would just say, uh, we last met on December eighth, and I reported on that meeting at our December tenth meeting. So there has not been a meeting since my last report. We will be meeting on January twelve, and I will upload a report at that time. Um, but you can look at Mr. Gilbert's um SPLOS report to see the the bottom line, which is, first of all, that November, we got two point one eight million in sales tax um receipts, which is great. We're we're about what we were last year at this time. Um, and second of all, there's a ten million uh dollar collection above planned budget. And so, um, Mr. Gilbert, I don't know if you want to address that this time, or whether we will address that in Property Committee at some point.
Um, as far as, yeah, I mean, we, when we have our meeting next week, we'll go over those items. And like I said, there's any questions now, or also with the Property Committee coming up in January.
Right. Is it appropriate to mention um the the board offices and how we might react to the board office contract coming up? Or maybe we'll do that in the in the C O C meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, report at the next board meeting.
So I have a question for community oversight.
Yes.
Okay, how many people are on that committee?
Oh, fourteen, fifteen?
On the C O C?
It's on the website. I can uh check.
You guys were looking.
They are looking for new members, so if there, if you know someone who would be interested in joining that committee, absolutely have them contact me or uh Mr. Sam's. Um, there's a, there's a, actually, there's an email on the website.
Okay.
For direct contact.
Thank you.
But they are looking for new members, for sure.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Um, Dr. Jaeger, we'll move forward with Envision Athens. Uh, any questions or further discussion, Ms. Davis, or other board members?
I did post the meeting for um, sorry, the newsletter for the January report on Envision Athens. But from an administrative and oversight community um and implementation oversight committee perspective, you know, we're gonna uh do our choice or do our committee selections this year, and I've been on this committee since the inception. And and I'm perfectly happy to allow someone else an opportunity to to share their views and maybe uh, you know, connect in a different way than I have. But I do want to just uh mention that as an oversight committee, the Envision Athens group isn't a five oh one C three, and they don't have any particular legal structure. And we thought that that served us well for being open to everyone feeling welcome there at the table and that being a critical part of who and what Envision Athens is all about. But that is a decision that will be coming up shortly, so if that's something you have a particular interest in, then I I would encourage you to consider uh taking on this community, uh, this committee as one of yours. And that's my report, along with what I sent an email.
Thank you. Um, our Georgia School Boards Association, I don't have um any particularly new updates. Um, always uh, or at least try to defer to also Ms. Davis and um Mr. Davis, just to be sure I haven't missed something as it relates to our Georgia School Boards Association.
I I have no information.
I simply read all of the emails that come through, and I'm I'm good. I know that there's some things legally that are coming up or some um legislative items that we want to pay attention to going forward, and I'm sure that they will show up in uh Mr. Polly's report that comes out, I think, every month to let us know legislatively what we want to put a watch on.
Thank you. Um, all right, we'll move forward with or to item five, which is our board president report. There are a few things I wanted to mention. You will also be able to find this information in the document next year. Um, between now and next week as well. But um I did send out a um a survey just to see who is available for our end of month retreat. If you have not completed that, I am gonna ask that you complete that between today and tomorrow. It should take maybe ten seconds, no more than sixty seconds. Um, and just to clarify, we are using that the Friday-Saturday model. It's very similar to what we did well, now the year before last, I think, actually, the earlier part of last year as well, where we will um will spend Friday evening um doing some type of professional development, training, team building, and then Saturday afternoon uh for that time as well. Right now, uh, all of this is planned virtually, particularly the one in January. Um, a part of that uh that January agenda, however, will also be to go ahead and identify a date for our summer retreat so that we're not um having to figure out dates at the last minute. Technically, we could go ahead and figure out the retreats for the next year as well, since I think we'll have some stability on the board, you know, for the next um two years, but um, so that's something, if you haven't completed that, please do. Just a reminder that the fourth Thursdays of each month, we have this designated as a board. We've decided that that will be our uh day for professional development, so I am asking board members, I know all of us have, uh, well, most of us have, uh, you know, full-time jobs, and we have many other responsibilities. But I do want to um ask, request that you uh set that time aside for our trainings um and professional development and team building. Again, this will be an extension of really building our strength as a governance team, uh, while we're also continuing to address some of the areas of growth with Cognia, as well as addressing some of the areas of our um self-assessment that we conducted. Um, there is, I did send a um an email. Well, let me just say this first, because that may require further discussion. I have um spoken with Dr. Thomas about possibly um having the district create just a general update, um, you know, on where we are with Cognia, just letting the community know we've had the visits, when we had the visits, and what, you know, a general timeline that they provided us with, but of course, I'm one person. So I did want to uh bring that to the board to see if you all thought that even necessary, or if you feel that the community knows where we are. I just want to be sure that we are on the side of uh oversharing and being sure that people understand where we are in this process, because uh we we've made a lot of growth and and progress. But it is very important that the community, uh, that we keep communication open with the community as far as where we are in this process. So do you all have any um strong opinions either way about the district providing just a a general update on uh a report on where we are right now in the process?
That's personal.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, of giving those updates, again, over-communication and something like this just keeps people from being surprised.
Mm-hmm.
See the outcome, and uh and again, it keeps it fresh in our mind that that, you know, we are working toward a specific goal.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Jaeger and Ms. Davis. Any others feel strongly either way, trying to just get a general consensus?
I think it's a good idea. I think um some people have been following it, some people heard about it and have not really been following it. So I think it would be good to have um just an update to let people know where we are. I think it couldn't hurt and would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dykman.
Dr. Gant, I can work with Ms. Moore on that um communication, and we can begin drafting something and then share it with you uh to see if there's anything we've omitted that we should include.
Okay, that would be great. Are there any, that would be great. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Any other board members feel uh strongly either way, or?
We're talking about a, is this, is this a periodic update, or?
Right now, we're talking about just the current update, like right now. Um, but certainly, as Ms. Davis mentioned, it's probably not, you know, uh, a bad idea to provide updates, particularly as things change, and like, we know that since the last time we met, well, when we met as a board and in December, we had the the visits. And so, you know, after the board engages in some type of either formal discussion or process, I do think it could be a good idea to keep the public updated on that.
Okay. Yeah, I agree.
All right. Well, Dr. Thomas, yes, if you don't mind, I think there's general consensus that that could be beneficial, so if you could um keep us updated on that, that would be great. Um, the other item uh in my board report is I forwarded a communication from, I think it was early December, maybe the second week in December, um, from GSBA. If you recall, the last time we spoke about our gathering stakeholder feedback as a board, we decided to um engage GSBA in their services um and see what that would look like. And so from there, uh, myself, Dr. Thomas, Mr. Barlamet, I think, I'm trying to think, maybe Dr. Maddox, uh, we did have a meeting and just asked them, shared with them, uh, you know, what our request was, and as you know, and Dr. King um and Mr. Polly, and as you know, Dr. King is intimately familiar with the work we've been doing over the past year, year and a half. And so um they then sent a proposal as far as the services they could provide. Now, also, since that time, uh, we have had our Cognia visit, and um one of the things that came up in that visit, or at least in conversation, of course, this was not any formal feed, formal written feedback, was that um the team was not expecting like a formal uh, or they weren't expecting us to spend like an astronomical amount of money. They wanted us to be able to use um the resources ideally that we already have to gather stakeholder feedback and for it not to be a one-time thing. And so using the pieces that we already have in place, um, be it the uh the advisory boards we have in place. Um, also, Mr. Barlamet, share it with us, the Cognia uh platform that we also have access to, to be able to create a survey. Um, and then also just keeping in mind the GSBA, our domains, those domains of governance. And so I wanted to bring that back to you just for your thoughts and considerations, and perhaps this actually could have or should have been like an individual item that was not under the president's report. But I just wanted to get the general idea as far as how you want to move forward. Do we still want to engage GSBA in their services? Um, do we want to, you know, just with the support of Julie and Sam, create our own survey uh using the Cognia tool that we already have access to and with uh Mr. Barlamet's support? But I just wanted to bring it back to you since when we had that conversation, we had not met with Cognia. Any thoughts about that?
My first thoughts are with our new board members, and perhaps as a part of the agenda on our first retreat, would this be a good topic for us to uh discuss to determine, you know, how do we want to collect stakeholder feedback as an as an entity? And and so I'm wondering if we could have that conversation on the retreat agenda.
I like that a lot. It was interesting being able to just watch um how things kind of played out, how that survey went, what responses and the assessment um results indicated. And so I would really like the opportunity if we could discuss that after retreat, so we can kind of get on the same page and start working together as a team.
Thank you, Ms. Davis and Attorney Hall. Others?
I agree. I think it, I think that would be very appropriate, and obviously, it's a piece that we have to put in place and have it on a regular basis, ongoing, presumably.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any others before we move forward?
Great. It seems like a good discussion for the retreat if we have capacity.
Okay. All right. Okay, thanks, Dr. Jaeger. So if we could make a mental note, or I guess we can come back and look at this video, but and Ms. Palmer has bacon note, but if y'all could help us remember as we begin to fill out the agenda for the retreat, that we will um have this particular item on our retreat, and I think that would be useful, because if you remember, this was one of the areas, this was one of our directives, and um you know, it may, you know, possibly be something that we have to do some continuous workaround. All right, and the very last thing for my report is um committees, and we, uh, you see that listed. And Dr. Jaeger, I'm gonna ask if you don't mind, if you would sort of pull up or uh reference BBC others yeah, as well, um, we may need to reference Policy BBC, but as you know, January is the time that we select committees. And we don't have, uh, right now, we just have it as a discussion item for tonight with um the the uh work being next week, the goal being to select committees. However, this was also um another conversation that came up in our Cognia discussions, and uh, Dr. Thomas, it, please feel free to jump in. I I'm just recalling the meeting I was in, and then the meeting I was in with, I think, Mr. Stevens, but then also the meeting I was in with you. Um, and this is related to one of our directives as it relates to committees, and there seem to still be some general concern um that we are not using our committees efficiently. Now, that can mean a variety of different things. I can tell you my interpretation, but I, I mean, that's, I'm just one person and um, but what I did walk away from that uh conversation thinking is that we do still have some work to do around committees, um, which puts us in a peculiar place, right? Because our policy says that we select our committees this month. And our um, and some of our committees, as you know, have with our old board members rolling off, in order for them to be able to function, they need, they have to have a quorum there, and so they have to have an actual committee. And so I wanted to just put this on the table to get any thoughts, like, as far as like what we do. Yeah, and Mr. Pruitt, you uh may need you to weigh in as well. Um, because we're in sort of this peculiar place, probably needing to rethink our committees, or maybe not, you know? Uh, but I I definitely think it, we could take another look at our committees, like the committees that we have. Do we need all of the committees that we have? And if we do need the committees that we have, do we need that same number of individuals on the committee that we have? Do we need to have more parameters around what participation looks like um at the committees? One of the concerns is that with some of our committees, we have, uh, you have the committee there, but easily, if it's a four-person committee, a fifth person makes it a quorum of the board. And although we are not like necessarily voting, uh, and the committee members are voting specific to that committee, in essence, it's still uh a board member, so consensus can still be gathered uh when you have a quorum of the board. And so I'm just trying to figure out, how do we move forward? What do we do with the need to have committees in place? But then also with the peculiar situation we're in and the feedback that we've received from Cognia? Any thoughts?
Could I make one, one sort of just sideline opinion from months of observing the meeting, the 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 meetings from my standpoint? It seemed like a lot of the committee discussions were um, they were discussed robustly during committees and then re-discussed during board meetings. And so people who were in the committee meetings would end up sitting through hours of sort of redundant conversation, eh, for lack of a better term. Um, so I wonder if there's a way to avoid these same conversations sort of unfolding over and over and over, and I think that that is part of what prolongs the meetings um into four and five hours, is just the repetition of conversations that were already had and resolved, presumably resolved, and then sort of rehashed. I I don't know how to resolve that, but from an observation standpoint, that's what I noticed. Um, so.
Thank you for, thank you for sharing that, Dr. Anderson.
So I I have some thoughts on that, too, and I I think it would be a great idea to look at our committee's structure overall. Um, and again, just looking at the number of committees that we have and what we're actually trying to achieve in the committees, because I think that would help with this redundancy and uh repetition that we're we're talking about here. If a committee isn't the right thing to give every board member voice into a policy, which is our primary role, then maybe we need to figure out what that structure looks like to have those policy discussions, because I don't think that we would ever ask a board member to not weigh in on a policy change, update, or revision, or creation, uh, just so that we don't have to rehash the conversation. And of course, if you weren't there, then there's no other way to get the information, all right? And so it's not about um the redundancy necessarily, as much as it is about how do we build consensus around making a policy or changing a policy from my perspective. So the policy committee is the one that stands out for for that particular discussion. The other things that uh have really kind of uh weighed on my mind heavily is how we handle our finance committee, how we handle our property committee, and those things where all all the board members really need to have a say. And so we can talk about it in committee, and in the past, it was again where you would bring it up in committee and try and vet it, but then the committee would make a decision to bring it forward to the full board. I have no expectation when we bring something forward to the full board that we wouldn't have the discussion again, because the full board wasn't there for the committee meeting. And so I'm not sure that I understand how we can change our committees, but I would certainly love for that to be a collaboration of the entire team so that we can be more efficient with our committee.
So I have just a a question as as a newbie, so I'll take new privilege of not knowing the answer to this, but is there um is there a requirement that we have certain committees? Or is that something that the board has just in the past done to be beneficial? Because what I, from what I hear, um, through the discussion, i- it's incumbent for the, everyone to have a say in it. Um, but maybe that that say in that discussion at the board meeting um would need to be the discussion instead of having a first discussion in a policy committee and then having another discussion at the board meeting. I guess my my question would be, are the committees necessary, um, either by requirement or some other function?
Let's speak to the the requirement part. No, standing committees are not required at all. Many boards do not have standing committees. Um, GSBA has told Clark County that it has, even for boards that do have some standing committees, it has an unusually high number of standing committees.
So I think that's the fair discussion that we need to, what I would like for us to have anyway. And in terms of setting these committees up for January, I think that's the will of the board. If we don't want to transition in January, we can suspend our policy requirement and do something else. And so I I'm really in a place where with the new board, I'd love for us to truly vet these um ongoing concerns and and let's take the time to to get them to a place where we are all in agreement that we can, or consensus that we can move forward.
Right. Okay. Uh, Dr. Jaeger?
Yeah, so I would just say, based on my one-year observation, my end of one, um, I have spent a lot of time in committee meetings, a lot of time, many, many hours extra per per month than I think I was told when I than I think I was told when I first signed up for this job, which was, oh yeah, there's two meetings a week, or two meetings a month. So the committee meetings are, are taking a lot of time. Now, do they need to take a lot of time? I don't know. But it seems like the committees are the places where we really talk about stuff. And, um, the, the meetings are completely open to any board member to listen to. But when we get into trouble with Cognia is when we allow more than the four board or committee members to chime in. So I, I understand Ms. Davis's concern, um, but I also know that if we had all of these hours and hours and hours of committee conversations during normal board meetings, we would never finish. So there's a lot of work to be done that needs to be done in smaller groups. And I think that we need to keep in mind that not all nine of us, we have a very large board. And I don't know when GSBA says we have a lot of committees relative to other districts, do they also notice that we have a very large board rather, relative to other districts? And so for all nine of us to meet and discuss thoroughly every single little nitty gritty issue, particularly in policy, I'm just a little bit worried that our, our board meetings are going to be 10 hours long. So there is a useful aspect to committee work that I would like to not forget.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see gray for you.
I can't see everyone.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Dr. Gant?
Yes.
I do, I do, I do see, um, a couple of committees that I, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, how they're restructured. But I, I'm, I do agree with Dr. Jaeger in terms of the policy committee insofar as there's a, a lot of, of what's talked about is wordsmithing, you know, and, and I, you know, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't want to end up with, with five-hour work session meetings. If we can avoid it. Um, so I, I don't know if there's a, if there's a, um, if maybe, maybe there, maybe we need to kind of divide the baby in two and, and leave it to the policy committee to those policies that, that, that seem to create quite a bit of, of concern or, or interest that those be tabled and be brought to the entire board. Whereas the, the policies that are, are what we've been doing, which is going through policies that date back to 1985, that, um, as Mike says, I mean, the law has not changed, nothing's changed. You know, and so we need to just kind of update it, maybe with a, with a wordsmith or two. So I'm, I'm just offering that as an alternative because I, I, I am concerned about having very, very long work sessions. Maybe because I, I just turned 70, but my, uh, attention span just slipped.
So I wonder too, if this would be something that we could do some workaround at our retreat. Um, I do know that, you know, a large part of, well, some of our retreat absolutely needs to be whole board training. Everybody needs to be there. In an ideal world, everybody will be there. But then some of the things that we do will be directly related to governance. And so I guess my only question would be, and Mike, this may be a question for you, if we actually add this, like we're adding the, um, the other, darn it, I did slip my mind, something else that we just talked about adding to our committee agenda.
The survey.
Survey, yes, survey. Um, if we add that to our retreat agenda, that is probably going to be at the end of this month, and our policy says that the members of standing committees shall be, um, Board of Education members, and at the January work session, um, that this will be determined, how would we reconcile that? If that's something like, if we, because it, it sounds like what I hear is that we need to have more discussion around it. And we need to, you know, do some more talking and thinking about our committee work. Um, and that the retreat would afford us the time to do that.
Before we go to, to the retreat, can I also, and I'm, I'm interrupting you, Mike, I know you're ready. But the GSBA has offered a service for policy ma- ma- management and maintenance. And have we explored that as well? So before we go into a retreat, can we at least collect all of the information that would address our concerns around policy, uh, their currency and their up, up, upkeep and maintenance? Because I vehemently heard Julie say in one of our training sessions, that that's what GSBA does. And so I'm curious as to whether or not this is the work that we should be engaging in to the level that we are, or is that committee's work, you know, more appropriately evaluated or even determined? Maybe based on, you know, giving this whole policy thing to GSBA as an agent to, to manage on our behalf?
So that. And so, and so maybe, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
I'm done. Thank you.
I was going to say, that may be just some additional information that we can carry into a, a more detailed conversation about how we move forward, not just with policy. We still have other committees that, you know, we probably need to look at beyond policy. Um, and so that, that just may be another piece of information that we can add. And if I'm not mistaken, I think we have that information somewhere. Um, I think Dr. Jaeger or Dr. Thomas started that conversation at some point and gathered some information. One of us did, just as far as like the services and things like that and how GSBA may be helpful, even if it's not currently, um, you know, it's not currently with the work that we're doing right now, but moving forward after we've done the work to reset and review all of our policies and things of that nature.
So I'm not, not put from that. I've only heard that it has, that they have that.
Okay.
The other thing that I would say is that prior to us changing our policy to do our committees the way we're doing it now, this was a presidential, the board president's responsibility was to set up these committees and to, um, actually do the solicitation at this meeting for every board member. And then we get the final approval at the Jan-, at the January voting meeting. So this doesn't even have to be something that we do. It could, we could also take it back and put it in the hands of president, you know? So there are other options that we have, and that's just a policy change, my opinion, or my experience, I should say.
So, uh, back to the original question, if, obviously you have to do something to decide what you're going to do in the interim. I believe if you voted next week to simply leave the committee appointments as they are until some later date, once you've had the retreat and come back to address it, you would have satisfied the policy. And certainly there's nothing prohibiting you from changing your policy structure at any point during the year.
Okay. And so, Mr. Pruitt, in that case, if we just say, if, if there's consensus that we want to leave those committees as they are until we reconcile this at, at retreat or a further conversation, the committees that had people roll off of them, right? Like if it was a committee of three or four that went to, um, three, then those three would then make up the committee, right? So it would take two for a quorum.
Uh, good point. Yes. Um, so that would need to be part of the motion that's made next week. Do you want to just change those committees to committees of three? Or do you, do you want to appoint a new member to fill that vacancy?
Until we actually.
Yes, until, you know, it would be, it's, it's, it's a temporary appointment pending some later action.
Okay. All right. Um, are, are you all okay with that? Are you?
I like that.
Just like to remind everyone, the committees that we have, we have the policy committee, which has four of us still present, so we'll still have four. There's the finance committee, which I believe will need a new chair. There's the property committee, which I believe will need a new chair.
Dr. Jaeger, let me interrupt you. Finance, and can you send this to us? I think you or Lisa or someone sent it to us last year. But finance, how many people will be left on finance too?
I think just two.
Yeah. We lost Charles, and Antoine. So maybe, uh, if you would, if we can make that motion so that you can appoint people to those committees in the interim, that would take care of, uh, giving our new board members an opportunity.
Right. The ones that have two, to have a temporary appointment, basically.
That would be great.
Okay. Dr. Jaeger, what were the, oh, go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Also, I'm property committee, Charles Lucky was president. I am vice president of that committee. And we have me and, uh, Tish, and, uh, who else was on property?
I think it was Antoine, but.
Was it Antoine there? Okay.
I think so.
Dr. Gant. Okay.
Maybe it was. You're right. It is Dr. Gant. Yep.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Recused yourself a lot last fall.
I did.
Right. Okay. So again, so again, to fill that in, that, that would be great.
Okay. So, Dr. Jaeger, I think you're looking at referencing something. And Ms. Palmer, is there any way, I guess so that we can move this conversation forward? Could you all send out to the board those? Okay. And then that way, by next week, I think what I hear Mike saying is that we can just make a motion that we will postpone, I guess at least the long-term appointments, but make some interim appointments so that at least those committees will be able to have a quorum to meet, and then we'll discuss this further later in the month at the retreat.
Based on, on everyone's experience with the time commitments to the committees, what is, what is a reasonable number of committees for each member to be on in a year so that they are serving a purpose but not overextending and not being useful?
Generally, two or three.
Okay.
Two committees and then these other groups that we have that we are appointed to or that we are serving in the community.
The advisory or the board, like the community.
Like the COC or the Envision Athens.
Or the early head start, head start, and all of those other things.
So two or three committees within the BOE, but then also two or so advisory committees to external agencies?
I don't know that that would be two. I think, you know, mostly it's one.
One. Okay. And depending on how the conversation goes with restructuring committees or not, you know, it may be that, you know, I think we just have to do a little bit more work around it. It may be that, for instance, if we don't need a committee, I think of property often. Most times with property, a lot of us want to be there. And a lot of that conversation is in an executive session. And so, mm, do we need a standing property committee? I don't know. Do we need a standing finance committee? I don't know. I, I don't know the legal aspects of that. But I, I would agree with Mr. Pruitt that we have, um, we are a large board, but I do think we have, um, a, a lot of committees and there are some ways in which we can rethink how we do that work.
I really want to have that conversation because I think that those are the two critical pieces of our fiduciary responsibility. And so if we don't have someone who is laser focused on those two things, then I'm not sure that as a board, we would do ourselves a lot of service to have those subjects come up without someone having potentially had some other conversations or done some investigation around it prior to coming to the board.
Dr. Dyckman?
We can, um, talk about this at the retreat, but I just wanted to put something out there that I've been thinking about in terms of committees, just for people to think about. I think some of our committees are more discussion and we get information, and some of them are more, um, action or, or doing work. And I kind of think of, sorry, the committees as being important to divide up the work. So if there's something that requires, um, people to be working on something, then those people can be on that committee. But maybe we don't necessarily need ones that are just discussion, that we then have the discussion again later. But that's just something to, to consider in terms of, oh, like what we're trying to accomplish with the committees.
Yeah. In that being, the superintendent evaluation committee, Kara, it seems like a really critical work committee. And policy would also be a work committee.
If, if I could chime in, Madam President, just a second, just to answer Dr. Anderson's question. Every, for all the new members, as you're evaluating, you know, how much time you have and which committees suspended on, every committee's a little different. Policy committee is far and away the most timing, time-consuming. It, it is supposed to meet only once a month, but for the last quite a few months, it's been meeting multiple times, and those meetings are long. Finance committee meets once a month, sometimes less, and those meetings are usually pretty short. Government relations usually only meets once a month, um, and those go maybe an hour, um, give or take, not as long as the policy committee, and they typically don't have multiples. Superintendent Evaluation, that only comes up twice a year. And so there may be mul-, you know, several meetings close together, but they wouldn't be meeting every month. Property Committee, uh, it never has regular meetings. It only meets as needed. So everyone's a little different, something to keep in mind as you're thinking about which ones you want to be on.
Well, thank you all for your, sharing your opinions and, um, this information. We'll, um, we'll keep this on the agenda for next week, but, um, just sort of keeping in mind our conversation that we may have to make some temporary appointments. Ms. Palmer will send out, um, information as far as all of the committees. So we'll actually see which ones need, uh, temporary appointments. The only thing I have left, um, actually is just to welcome our new board members. I probably should have did that at the very beginning of the meeting. But I do want to, um, officially welcome Dr. Anderson, Attorney Hall, as well as Ms. Gallagher, and say welcome back to Dr. Jaeger. These are our four board members that were recently sworn in, or one will be sworn in next week. And, um, just wanted to say on behalf of the board that, um, we, of course, appreciate the work you've already done because you've certainly been plugged into conversations and the work we've been doing to improve our governance structure. And we are glad to have you join us, and please feel free to reach out to, uh, any board members. I know that there is a series of, um, training, trainings planned for, for you all within the next month or so, but I just wanted to officially say welcome. Dr. Thomas, uh, we'll move forward. If, I think that's it for me, we'll move forward with item number six and, um, your superintendent's report with items six one, six two, and six three.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And, um, you ended with what I was going to start with, which was welcome to our new board members. We did have the swearing-in ceremony today. It was modified based on COVID and our pandemic restrictions. But nonetheless, the excitement was still there to see our four board members, um, three, I'm sorry, sworn in today. And then our fourth will be sworn in later. So I just want to thank you all on behalf of the district for your agreement to serve and your willingness to sacrifice personal time to help improve educational outcomes for our children. We appreciate your commitment. Already, um, all of you have worked tirelessly in different ways to support the students of Athens Clark County, and we look forward to having you in your new role with us on the board and as a part of, um, our more specific work in serving children through the Board of Education. So thank you and welcome. I had been asked, um, when we had our agenda setting meeting by Dr. Gant, if we could provide a COVID update. I shared that, uh, just a brief overview with you all today. And then we shared with principals and staff and had planned to share, uh, this evening with the community. And we will still send that out. I think someone jumped the gun on us with that, but we will still send that out as an official communication from the school district, um, during this meeting. But at this time, Dr. Watley, Jillian Watley, our executive director of School Supports, is going to share an update on our data. And then Mr. Gaskins will share instructionally what our response to that data will be. And then Mrs. Duke has some information regarding staffing and how that relates to where we currently are with our pandemic numbers. So at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Watley.
Dr. Watley, we can't hear you.
Presentation's up, but we don't hear her.
Presentation's up, but we don't hear her. Is she on here?
I think she lost connection.
I believe she logged off and she's going to log back on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know what's going on with my computer today. But thank you all for being patient with me. I'd like to welcome the new board members. That's what I was saying earlier. And I look forward to working with you this year. We're going to first start off with talking a little bit about the data in terms of COVID numbers. And so if we can, you can proceed to the next slide, Lisa. As you can see here, we are using the five data indicators per the CDC. And we can click on that monitoring five indicators, Lisa, for the new board members so that they can see that. And those indicators, there are, we have a series of indicators. The first is the core indicators. The second, of course, is secondary indicators. We look at the new cases. We look at the ability to mitigate our strategies in schools. Those are, and you can scroll down, Lisa, so they can see the entire chart. These are all our indicators that we look at on the side. Whether or not we're implementing mitigation strategies. But our second indicators are those, our percentage change in new cases per 100,000 population and also our hospitals, whether or not they are at maximum rate or whether or not they are beneath maximum. And so that information that we've taken from the CDC, we thus created a dashboard, which we will review at this moment. So these indicate, and you can go back to the next, go back to the slide, Lisa. These indicators are shown on the Clark County COVID-19 data dashboard. And as of January seven, all of the community indicators or all the indicators are in the red zone, as you can see here. If you all will, we did a screenshot and kind of placed it here. Thank you, Lisa. New cases per 100,000, as you can see, is 801. We definitely have where our percentages with the hospitals is 1, 1212.9%, which is significantly high. Clark County is definitely in the red zone. When we, when you see that number five, if Lisa, you go back to that chart, that five means that we're implementing all of our mitigation strategies within the school district. But as we can see, the community around us is in the deep red zone. That means that we are, you know, significantly at risk in that area.
One more, Ms. Palmer. We can go back one more slide. It was the chart. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dr. Watley.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Sorry about that.
There we go.
There you go. The number of mitigation strategies, over to your right, we're implementing a five and we're hand washing. We're using masks. We have things, you know, we've done some exhaustive things in our schools, putting up protective, students are six feet away from each other as well as teachers. So we're doing what we need to do, but when we look at the community around us, there's so much going on in terms of our hospital bed use, as you can see. Percentage of beds occupied by COVID patients, those numbers are significantly higher and definitely indicate that we are not in a good place within the community. Next slide.
Dr. Watley, while that slide is advancing, I know some of our, most, many of our board members are statisticians in some way. So you might wonder about that 112%. But so that those numbers are at that level because the hospitals have actually had to bring in additional beds from other units to support the ICU. So they're at 100% of the ICU beds. I think that was ICU numbers. I'm not going to ask you to go back, Lisa, but whatever that category was, we were, they had to bring in additional beds to support that area, so that's why it's at 112%.
And that's a good point you raised. And also to provide a picture is that the hospitals within Clark County do support the surrounding areas. So again, that's why they're having to bring in other, create other rooms to support the student, not the students, but the people who have significant COVID symptoms. We can go to the next slide in terms of positivity rate. And this again is some data here that shows our positivity rate, which is going up. You know, many of us are watching the news. Yes, it's located on the CCSD website, Mr. Davis. We are watching the news and we see, what we've seen is a spike that has occurred after the Thanksgiving holiday and another spike that continues to occur after Christmas. So it seems though the positivity rate continues to trend upwards. Nurse Amy Warwick has been updating me on this new COVID strand that's out that seems to be easily transmittable, as well as the latency period between onset, it seems to be shortened. So the symptoms kind of display more readily as opposed to waiting those amount of days that we first had in the first strand of the COVID. So the cases are definitely going up in terms of positivity rate. Next slide. And again, these are the local cases, local cases that we have within the, in, within the county as well. And as you can see here, since March 2020, these cases are, they, they kind of went, you know, down, but now they're starting to peak back up as of December. So again, it's the trend line is starting to move back upwards and this is the data we're looking at on a daily basis. Next slide. Currently, our hospital intensive care is has COVID, 43% of their patients in the hospital have COVID-19. The CDC recommends the percentage should be under 10% to the lower, to lower the risk of introduction and transmission in schools. And as you can see, we're at 43% of the patients have COVID. Next slide. Okay. So overall, at this point, we are reviewing our data daily. We do have established COVID district teams. We have COVID meetings every morning to review that data of what's not only going on in our schools, but also what is going on in our community. Our goal is to remain committed to teachers and staff and students staying safe and continuing our mitigation strategies if we decide to return to school in the future. But at this point, the numbers are significantly higher within our community and the surrounding counties. And so I think we're in a safe space in being virtual right now, Dr. Thomas and team. And that concludes the COVID data reports.
Mr. Gaskins?
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, and thank you, Dr. Watley. So as a cabinet, we, as Dr. Watley mentioned, reviewed this information. And as the board knows, we were anticipating returning for in-person instruction on January the 19th. We will postpone that return for in-person instruction. And what I would like to talk about now is just how we are planning regarding our, our return to in-person instruction. So there are really three major things that we talked about as it relates to instruction. So one is the return to in-person instruction, as I mentioned. The other is exploring additional instructional models to return as soon as possible. And then we just want to talk about the enrollment registration that we asked parents and families to do prior to getting out for the winter holiday. So as we return to the subheading on return to in-person instruction, it is our commitment to have students return to in-person instruction and continue to provide a virtual model as well as an in-person model for students. One of the first things that we want to consider in a return is our specialized programs, such as our students that have severe or profound disabilities, as well as our special education students and adaptive programs. Those class sizes are smaller, so we can better socially distance. We can mitigate the spread of the virus in those classrooms. So instead of waiting until we can return all of our students, we are thinking about how we can return our specialized groups as appropriate. The next bullet is, as you know, we provided an option for pre-K through eighth grade for in-person instruction. Our other commitment is to include high school in that return. So as we return our specialized groups, we are also planning on how we can return our pre-K through eighth grade students and our high school students as soon as possible. And our desire is to return our high school students at the same time as our pre-K through eighth grade students, if that is possible. So we are planning in the background on how to do that. As we talk about exploring instructional models, our instructional model prior to the winter break is that we return students for a full five days of instruction. We are thinking and planning on how we may be able to do that on a hybrid return. So if the numbers continue to persist and we don't feel comfortable returning students to five days of full instruction, we are considering how we may be able to return them once or twice a week. So students do have an option to be in front of their teacher and in their school building at least once or twice during the school week. The other thing that we know that is very important to our parents is that they elected their registration for the second semester for students. And because those numbers have gone up, some parents have reached out to us about their ability to change from in-person to virtual instruction. And what we want to tell our parents is first that we will never have our buildings open if we feel that it is unsafe. So it is our commitment that if, as the numbers are now, we don't want to put parents in a situation where they want their kids to be in school, but if the numbers are so high, they feel like they are required to keep them in in-person and not move them to virtual. So we're going to just pause for a second with that enrollment registration. We have those numbers, the window closed, I believe, earlier this week. So when we get to a point where we're ready to return to an in-person instruction model, we will work with principals around communicating to parents their ability to, to change their enrollment registration if needed and as appropriate. But what I would just really want to say, and Dr. Thomas and cabinet, we are just very, I think, committed to bringing our kids back, but right now we just realized that it is unsafe. And if I could just say publicly to our specialized programs, we have parents that are at home that really want their, their students back in school and in those specialized programs, and we're doing everything in our power to make that happen as soon as it is, it's safe to do so for our students as well as our staff. And so, Dr. Thomas, that is our instructional update.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskins. And then Mrs. Duke has information from a personnel perspective.
Good evening, everyone. This is in response to the family's first coronavirus act that expired at the end of December. They did not elect to put back in the COVID leave provisions. And before you, on the board agenda, down in personnels, we are asking for you to extend that to our employees. We believe that it is very helpful when we're trying to keep our employees safe, that they have this leave available to them that doesn't count against their sick leave when they have to quarantine. And so the recommendation asks for that to be extended till the end of June. And we, you know, we don't have a crystal ball on any of this, so it might be that we can expire that sooner or we may need to extend it on into the fall. But hopefully the vaccines will, you know, help us get the numbers down to where we can all be safe. Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Mr. Gaskins, can you speak again to the question from Ms. Gallagher about postponing the opening? And there will be a written communication going out this evening, Ms. Gallagher, to families?
Yes, ma'am. So we have postponed our reopening into further notice. We, Dr. Thomas, we have a standing meeting every morning to review the data that Dr. Watley just shared. We do want to be able to announce a reopening two weeks, if possible, to help families adjust to the reopening. So as soon as we feel that we can reopen, we will try to announce that with as, as much notice as we can for families. But yes, yes, ma'am, we will postpone our, our reopening into further notice.
Dr. Jaeger, in regards to vaccinations, and right now we are listed as a 1B category, which has us near the top, but not at the top. Our local Department of Public Health and health departments are overburdened, to say it mildly. I have a meeting tomorrow with our area superintendents to address this very issue, to see, actually, everyone in our Risa area is in the same predicament except for one county and that county was able to work with their local hospital to get vaccinations for their staff. However, that was a group of 150, 160 people who wanted to, the vaccine compared to us having 2,500 staff to start with. We are sending survey, it's surveyed out to gauge interest from staff in obtaining the vaccine. But right now, we have not been given an official timeline. Nurse Amy has been asking and speaking with the DAH almost daily to try to keep us updated on that. But right now, we do not have an official timeline for when they will be able to dispense. We are trying to be creative and look for ways to, other resources for our families, but nothing definitive as of yet. Do we know if these vaccinations will come? And what do you mean, Mr. Davis?
What I'm, what I'm asking is that, first off, is, is the health department, it hasn't been clear to me. I've been trying to research it and it's not clear to me. Is the health department going to be the distribution? Point, I know when, when I've gotten emails from Piedmont, for instance, giving a list of folks who are giving vaccinations out and, and, but none of it's in the, in the Clark County area. So I, I'm, I'm just not clear in terms of when you, when you're working with the health department, would they be the distributors of it, of the vaccine? And, and would they vaccinate, that, spread the vaccine among our, our staff as a group, as a body?
So they are the primary entity that is providing, that has been providing for groups and for schools. That's our primary point of contact. As Dr. Gant said, there are other distributors there, out there. But the initial point of contact from the state down to schools has been the Department of Public Health. However, that was what I was referencing earlier. We are looking to see if there are other entities that can assist with this process because the burden is so heavy right now on the Department of Public Health. So we are exploring other options so that we can hopefully expedite access for our families.
Dr. Thomas, I have a quick question about, I think this is about Mr. Gaskins's slide as far as like instructional models and you all meeting every day. With the meeting, I know that the teacher advisory board and then there are other ways in which other departments are represented, like, you know, our custodial staff and our nutrition staff. As the district thinks of ways to sort of open, if it's even possible, under these circumstances or as numbers improve, are those groups, how are they involved in, you know, in that collaboration? Are they, is it still the, the task force? Are there still meetings going on with like teacher advisory and then the representatives on the task force? Just want to, I'm just curious and want to be sure that, you know, those voices aren't left out.
Right, so we have not had a recent meeting. Right. So we have not had a recent meeting of the task force. We have shared with different groups kind of our thinking. My language lately has been, we need to make our thinking visible so that people understand our thought process. I think that will help us with, with buy-in and being more transparent. But we have not engaged with those groups recently. And I don't know, I know Mr. Gaskins, Mr. Harris, I think Mr. Fisher, you all were over those task forces with Nurse Amy. And I don't know if you have planned meetings upcoming or not. I hate to put you all on the spot, but I'm not sure of the plans. But if not, that's something that we can discuss tomorrow as well.
We have not planned an upcoming meeting of the task force. But I will say, as it relates to instruction, we do meet with our principals quite often as it relates to those instructional models in schools. Our principals have done a great job with engaging their teachers around what is working best for their schools. They plan deployments of additional materials. I received phone calls today from schools that said, I met with my teachers today. When we got this information, this is something that we want to do to engage our kids. Is this something that we can do? And of course, we say, you know, if you can socially distance and, and make sure that you are safe, then yes, you can do it. So at this time, a lot of our instruction is guardrails around things that are required to, to, for, you know, pre-K through 12 education, but we give the autonomy to schools to make some of those decisions that best meets tho- those students' needs.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskins and Dr. Thomas. And I just want to quickly reiterate, like, and I think this is the board's position, at least as we talked about it last. You know, if there's anything we can do to support or reach out or collaborate as it relates to even our roles, to reach out to other stakeholders and decision makers, please let us know, as well as budgetary support that is needed.
I just wanted to ask, has there been any thought around how to incorporate some of the parent feedback in these conversations? I know, just as a parent, having a four-year-old doing Zoom pre-K, I have some really interesting ideas about some other models or some other things that may help some families. So is there any type of thought to how we would engage parents who may be able to give us some insight into how effective what we have already been doing is, and some ways that we could even improve? And I know as we start to look at how to get those students with IAPs back in the school, school, some of those parents might also have some ideas, some barriers and things that I just want to make sure have been considered.
I definitely think that's something that we can do, Ms. Hall. I will say that Heidi Hill, who's our executive director of Special Education, she has been at the forefront of that. She's worked with her coordinators to engage parents. I think the model that she is using, we can replicate that with, with all parents. So that's something that, she's a part of my team, so I can, you know, look on her paper and still some of the great things that she's doing. I will also say that we have also engaged our students in middle school and in high school. We work with the University of Georgia, James Parliament, and we administer a survey about how we can improve online instruction for them. And as you can imagine, they were very honest. I just went over that information actually with him on Tuesday. So I will work with my team to implement that feedback that they gave us and work with principals around that. I definitely think that there is an opportunity for more engagement with parents to, to help us with that.
Could the LSGTs be utilized for this as well, as information gathers as well?
Yes, and actually, Mr. Harris, Lawrence Harris, just sent me a message saying this is a great way to use our LSGTs. So yes, you all are thinking exactly alike, Dr. Anderson, and I just wrote that down in my notes as well. There was a question, Mr. Fisher, about technology. It was my understanding before we got out, Dr. Dykman, that the majority, if not all of our technology was in. I know that the hotspots were in, but can you speak to that, Mr. Fisher?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Yeah, everything that we had ordered earlier has arrived and those things have been distributed to our schools well before we got out for the holidays. So all the kids that need a hotspot should have those hotspots with them, iPads, that nature. It came in, we got those distributed. So I think the only thing we got missed, we're still waiting for the Chromebooks. But everything else is up and running and, and I think, and again, since we just started back, I hope that everything is going well, especially with the hotspots.
I've got a question, Dr. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
When I was out canvassing, I ran across a doctoral student who was supervising math, soon-to-be graduate in the Department of Education. They were doing their internship virtually, and they were doing them in different counties. If he was supervising a small group of them. Is that, is that something that I, I would assume that if there was, if that was in the works, that we would, we would, we would be, you know, we would know about it. But is that, is that something that we, we're talked about?
I'm not exact. I see Ms. Duke nodding, but I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Duke, maybe you're tracking better than I was. In terms of them supervising people in different counties, are you asking, do we have?
They were doing it virtually. They were, they were in, they were doing their internship virtually.
We're asking if we have students, education students that are doing their what the internships or student teaching.
Their practical experiences and.
Right.
We do.
I have a rather, a maybe strange question, and it just popped in my head, Dr. Thomas, or else I would have asked you earlier. And maybe this is maybe for a conversation later. I'm just thinking, I know we don't know, for instance, how long the numbers will be the way that they are with those indicators, you know, and personally, I do, I really worry about our younger students, and I think I shared that a little bit when we spoke earlier today. But I'm wondering, like, as it relates to like either school supports, or maybe this would be more collaborative with our neighborhood leaders or what have you. Like, I hear the piece about LSGTs and gathering feedback and things like that. But I guess I'm just wondering, how can we lay eyes on our, some of our students, you know, like, because we really don't know whether we go back face to face, depends a lot on what's happening around us, and it's sort of outside of our control to a certain degree, you know, with the numbers being as high as they are. But, you know, I'm just thinking of like, you know, our kindergartners and particularly those that are in like areas. Like, I think I remember way back when, when we did some of the initial surveys, we had like low responses. I think it was like in the gangs area and maybe in the outs. I can't remember. It was one of the surveys that you showed. And so as it relates to social workers, and, and, and I may be blanking on other support people, but how, like, how do we keep eyes on our younger students? I know, like, that they're counselors, but I know it's typically only one of, you know, one, particularly in elementary schools, well, in most elementary schools, I think. So I'm just wondering, is that something that our social workers do or monitor, or is it sort of a matter of?
That's a good question, Dr. Gant. I hear where you're going with that because and this is Dr. Wiley speaking. So the social workers fall in my department with School Support Services and the model that they've been functioning under, and it's not a bad model. It's just, it's been a non-virtual, a, 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 a brick and mortar model, which is what we've been accustomed to in education. And so the director of social work and I have been having conversations about providing the social workers more support in terms of how to provide direct care. Not social working in the sense of if you need food, water, and clothing, but social working in the sense of I need to be sitting down with a kid doing groups. I need to be sitting down doing individuals. We know that during this pandemic, all of us are traumatized, whether you're an adult or a child. And so it would benefit most children to have those types of interventions, not even in special ed, just as a tier-one type of thing, right? And so we're doing a shift with that work. I'm not saying it's gonna happen overnight, but we're working towards that because that's an excellent, oh, now you popped to the other side of my screen. That's a excellent question. How do we keep our eyes on our babies? And not just for our elementary school students, but I'm concerned even more so about a meter and high as well, because I think sometimes we tend to keep, and this is just not even in Athens, Clark County, it's in, as a nation, in schools, we tend to be mindful of the students who are exhibiting like externalizing behaviors. But we have to be cognizant of the ones who are doing, exhibiting internalizing behaviors and what that may look like. That does not necessarily always look like what we think it looks like, and how do you glean that through a virtual model?
Right.
My eye is on that. I am troubleshooting with my team. And any thoughts that you may have, I'm aware of your background as well, how we can provide that support to our students would be welcomed. But we are definitely, I'm definitely aware, but we're doing a complete shift as of now with how social workers provide support.
Okay, thank you. And I don't want to, I don't mean to sort of overstep into that area. No. Dr. Thomas and Dr. Watley, I was just curious, particularly since it seems like the numbers are just, I mean, they are just not in our favor right now. And I don't know, it's like every time I go out and I see like alarming things, I'm like, okay, is it ever gonna, is it gonna shift? You know, so I just wanted to, I know that puts you, Dr. Thomas, as well as your team, in a very difficult position. And it's not that this is where we want to be. It's almost, this is sort of where we are. And so I was just curious about, you know, given where we are, you know, how do we maximize those supports or, you know, how do we, as a board, support you all if there are any additional resources, you know, that are, that are needed anywhere? So I'm sorry, I'm sort of monopolizing the conversation, but I just wanted to ask that while it's on my mind.
If I could just add, I think our social workers have a huge job to do, and, and Dr. Wiley is doing a great job with Crystal Gillison Directing Network. But we've also used our family engagement specialists, our counselors, our front office staff, our burrs, our assistant principals to make those phone calls. So schools are like, you were there this morning, it's lunchtime, you did not return. So that, so those individuals are jumping on the phone daily to make those calls before we have to engage our social workers, because our social workers have so many other, you know, huge tasks that also relate to, to supporting our kids. I think our principals have really done good jobs with engaging those other individuals, and especially our high schools, because we want to continue to improve our graduation rate. Our high school principals are meeting weekly. And they have a list of students that have not shown up for class, and they are deploying their counselors and, and other individuals in addition to their social workers to make contact with those students and their parents.
I was about to say that administrators are contacting parents. We did a very good job in the beginning of reaching out to every student in elementary school and middle school. And, you know, just touching base, seeing what is your plan? What are you doing? You know, how are you going to engage with us? And when those students aren't showing up or are not logging in, the school staffs have been very diligent about making contacts, and as Mr. Gaskin said, utilizing family engagement, counselors, assistant principals, receptionists. It's been an all-hands-on-deck model, just to make sure that we are keeping our hands on as many of the students as we possibly can. So our principals have done a great job of owning that. And I liked, someone mentioned in the chat about using LSGTs to gather that information. And ironically, I had written something very similar, because we can do surveys district-wide, but, you know, being completely honest, it's difficult to disaggregate that data like you need to on that level. But when we, and I was trying to think, as you all were talking, how do we get that to the principals? So the principals can then get it to us. But doing that and having LSGTs do it helps to break that down into smaller groups, and they can identify those specific needs and articulate that either directly as LSGT members to us or to their principals, and they get it to us. So that way, we can ensure that we're getting the information in chunks that are more usable. You know, and that just seems, you know, because we say, yes, we sent out a survey across the district, but if you have, you know, 12,000 or even 10,000 parents responding, it's difficult to take that and, and find commonalities. But if that's done by school, that allows us to really break that down and analyze the feedback and then get it to us in a way that we can really take action on. So I, I like that idea, and I've incorporated that into my notes.
I thought too, that maybe parents might be more apt to respond and respond candidly to the LSGT members from their school, because some of them are parents too, so they might, I don't know, it might just may be more honest.
Yes.
Feedback.
Yes.
I have a question about that, because I want to make sure that I, I do what's right, and I haven't had my board training yet. So would it be inappropriate for parents to reach out to their board member, their district, just to say, this, these are my concerns? And the board member pass that along to the local governance team or anything like that? Like, what are the boundaries of trying to put the footwork out there to gather this parent response and, and feedback, so that we can pass it on to Mr. Gaskins, to the task force, and the people making the decisions?
I was looking at Dr. Gant. Go ahead, Dr.
Well, I'll let Dr. Thomas also comment on this, because, you know, I, I see it from my view. She may, you know, she may feel a little bit differently, but I, it just sort of depends. I think, well, it doesn't depend. So we, we do share information. So I think most of us take the practice of whatever we hear, we share, particularly if it's, you know, about concerns, because the ultimate goal of all of us is really to have not just a high-functioning team, but a school district that's meeting the needs of students. And what that means is that people are gonna have concerns, they're gonna have questions, they're gonna have problems, and they're gonna have situations that they share with us that work very well. And so I know a lot of us just tend to, if someone calls, I know the first part of my tenure, I had a whole lot of face-to-face meetings. I mean, it was just probably a bit much. But even now, I think even if there's, my experience has been, even if there's no formal effort to gather information, people will call, and people will reach out because people are concerned. And we have talked about this previously, and this may come back up as we review our norms about the possibility of having being more intentional about our area of communication. And under that falls things like town halls and, you know, efforts like that, where we intentionally solicit feedback from the community. And where we left that at, that was sort of out there for further consideration. And so I don't know if that answers your question, Attorney Hall, but I definitely think that erring on the side of sharing information with the superintendent, particularly because a lot of the concerns fall within her purview and, and not ours. And so, but that doesn't mean that, you know, of course, we don't share that information and maybe even share our own perspectives as parents or what have you. And then there are other areas, certainly areas for collaboration. At least that's been my experience, but I'll defer to Dr. Thomas as well as the rest of the board. And you'll hear more about this as well during your training and hopefully during the trainings that we have as well.
I think you captured it well. So, you know, receiving that information, getting that to us is appropriate, and we're always open to that and getting feedback.
Thank you.
Dr. Jaeger, you asked about EOCs, definitely, and the numbers are, the, the, the value of it is .01%. And so we are not expecting. And so, um, we are not expecting of the, the level of, um, participation that we would normally have. And you said, you know, many will choose not to take them in person. Mr. Gaskins, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but i- it's, it's having it wa- weighted so low is, um, definitely a concern.
Right, so that has been my, my work with our Director of Assessment all week. We, um, are required to give the EOC. There is some controversy around it because of the low weight. We are trying to, um, um, Dr. Trey Ezekiel, who will probably text me in, in three seconds because I know he's watching. We've, um, emailed our specialists at the, the state to get a little more information around, um, taking the EOC, how our participation rate, because we are held accountable for having a 95% or higher participation rate on our EOCs and EOGs. There are a lot of unanswered questions. So, we will have more answers hopefully by the end of this week that we will be able to share with parents as well as, well, share with, um, our school leaders and then share with parents. What the state is telling us is that they don't want us to put a lot of pressure on our students around EOCs, which we won't. But we still need answers about how that will impact our district's participation rate if we don't have students to take those EOCs. So, once we, we learn more, I will definitely share that with the board, um, after we share that with our, our school leaders. And we have already started a communication to share with parents. We just have a lot of blanks because we need more information that is concrete. Um, because EOCs and EOGs are really, really important. Um, and we just want to make sure that we're communicating the correct information. Yes, Dr. Jaeger?
Is there a way to, to rethink the way we are delivering them? Like, do one by one by one kid with appointments or something? I don't know if that's even possible, but it just seems like putting a whole lot of kids in a room right now to take a test isn't really a good idea.
Our state superintendent has, um, as you know, he, um, asked for a waiver from the federal government and that waiver was denied. He's asking for another waiver. Based on our new administration, we may not have to take those at all. So, we are planning a lot of different, um, options, hoping that will be, um, the answer. The, the challenge with, um, testing small groups of students a- as you are, I'm suggesting, is that the window is very, very short, very, very small. We may run out of time. But I will definitely take that back to Dr. Ezekiel because we are really trying to find as many creative ways as possible. And if that doesn't work for the EOC, we still have PSA T, that we're offering our students, um, and some other exams that we might be able to use that, um, that creative idea that you just offered, Dr. Jaeger.
So, I, I have a question. So, as a charter district, aren't there a lot of different waivers that we can use to get out of such just?
We cannot use a waiver to get out of state assessments.
Okay, so what can we use the waivers for to put some protections in place for students who, um, for the district if students choose to opt out of end-of-course testing?
Well, the, the state superintendent has basically made the end-of-course test, which was from high school, worth 0.01%. So, it will not impact a student's grade either way. So, we are okay with that. Our question is, how does that impact our district participation rate? No one has answered that for us yet. I think it will not have an impact. So, if it doesn't have an impact, then kids that come, our kids that come and will use that information. And kids that don't come, they don't come. I think we just want to know what that answer is so we can make the right choice for our district and our kids.
As a participation rate, it's what, um, normally is used like for CCRPI and other, um, scoring for us on that level. But essentially, the state superintendent has made it weighted so low because they wouldn't allow us to not administer it. So, then the counter to that was, okay, well, we'll just make it so low that it doesn't mean anything. I hate to say it that way, but that's essentially what it, it did. So, yes. You all have given us some great ideas. Thank you so much. I've taken notes. I'm sure Mr. Gaskins is taking notes. And we will go back and, and look and try to implement some of your suggestions. I am going to, if there are no other questions, we'll move on to Ms. Karen Higginbotham, who is, um, over our early learning programs. And she has a presentation tonight for us that is required, um, as a part of her funding and, and policy following. So, it is the Head Start, Head Start, Early Head Start Governing Body Required Annual Orientation Presentation. So, she's going to provide that for us. And then after that, we will have a presentation on, um, our School Resource Officer program.
My apologies, I was happily talking away muted. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to share the Head Start or SANG governance training with you. As the Clark County School District's Head Start Governing Body, um, we must provide you with this governance training annually. And it's your responsibility to, for all but, for lack of a better term, use this training and your knowledge to make sure that we ensure the structures are in place so that we can provide effective management and oversight to enable delivery of extreme, uh, you know, of high-quality services for our students. Um, within our Ursa selection and enrollment, again, the training and we have to train our staff as well. And this training must include sort of this minimum to collect and complete and accurately ensure we have eligibility. You have a lot of processes in place to support the work that we do, the Board of Education policies, our school district's Code of Ethics, the Code of Conduct, you know, our rules and conditions for employment as well as our organizational structures that we have in place that allow us to meet, um, all of the requirements within our selection and requirement. The purposes behind our Head Start, it really aligns perfectly with Clark County School District's strategic plan. It aligns with our theory of action. Our priorities are reflected and, and it reflects the needs of our community. And so, um, as a part of Instructional Services Department, we have the opportunity to sort of serve as that bedrock foundation on which many of our students, um, can build and begin their educational journey. And I want to take a moment for us to be able to share a quick sort of testimonial video clip from a former Head Start student, not within Clark County, but within the program itself and how it began. Please let me know if you cannot hear.
I can remember it was like yesterday. I remember the first book I was given, which was great because I couldn't afford any books, giving us books and sitting there behind our little desk and reading. I can remember that. It was just such a pivotal point in my life.
Today, we're able to announce that we will have open and we believe operating this summer coast to coast some 2,000 child development centers. This means that nearly half the preschool children of poverty will get a Head Start on their future.
Is that the same as this? Yay!
From the absolute beginning, Head Start was never intended as just a preschool. The emphasis was on comprehensive services, nutrition, health screening, health care, social services, new careers for the parents with training, and income, helping people get out of the cycle of poverty. And that includes energizing, giving people confidence that they can do this. And it's one step at a time.
I was the only one to attend Head Start. And my sisters, who was two years older than I am, the huge difference it made. We have two people who grew up in the same house and the same circumstances. And I was the person who excelled at school. I am the person who went on to college. I'm the person that started my own business. I truly believe that I had a better opportunity for success than she did because I got to go to Head Start.
Now, within your presentation, you have the link for both this entire video clip plus the Head Start Families as Powerful Partners video clip. And I invite you to take time to go ahead and watch those at your leisure. But feel like, given the hour, um, that I will allow that to be some, or that I would invite you to do that separately. Within our Head Start program, with our Early Head Start Home Base Program, we have 100 students. Within our center-based Early Head Start, we have 64 students. Within our Head Start Threes, um, we serve 102 students. And with our Head Start Pre-K classrooms, there are 40 students. That's in addition, um, to our Pre-K across the district. All of these students qualify through our Eligibility Recruitment Selection and Enrollment and meet our criteria for advancement. Part of that selection criteria, our staff must have the training. They'll meet with and interview each family. They verify all of the information and they create an eligibility determination document for all enrolled and participants. And those are requirements for that determining, verifying, and documenting eligibility from the Office of Head Start. There are age requirements within both Early Head Start and Head Start. There are eligibility requirements that are required through the Office of Head Start. And then those that are components of eligibility or points that are a part of our community assessment. We also must verify all information and ensure what the eligibility duration throughout a program. So, if a student qualifies for Early Head Start, they have to requalify for Head Start, but they do not have to continue to requalify for Early Head Start to continue with the program. So, they're able to be a part of the Early Head Start for those zero, one, and two years. They're able to be a part of Head Start for the threes and fours years without requalifying, but they don't automatically move from Early Head Start to Head Start. We maintain the records, but we are, use all of the school district's PII safety procedures to ensure that those are all carefully worked and recorded and stored. And then we have the program policies and procedures that are a part of the Clark County School District procedures. We also have training on eligibility, both for our staff members and for our Policy Council and Recruitment Committee members. Within our selection criteria, and you, in December, voted on maintaining our same selection criteria this year. But we established that criteria for the Office of Head Start based on family income. But it's also some of the factors that are included would be homelessness or foster care because those are issues across the United States in addition to those concerns that have been noted in our local community needs assessments. We are required to have a waiting list to ensure that we are able to quickly refill any seats. You know, if they're, if they become available, if a family moves out of the town, if a family is not able to participate in our services, we're able to refill those seats so that we're able to offer services to as many students as possible. But of course, our goal is to serve all students. But the waiting list is something that we do have to keep per the requirements of the program. This year, due to the pandemic, our waiting lists are unusually short. It's not something that we would expect to continue beyond the year. But with COVID and its unique effect on things, we do have unusually low short, or short waiting lists this year. Our Head Start, Early Head Start budget, it is a five-year grant period. But we do have to reapply for that grant annually. And in the past, we've applied for and received this past year a cost of living adjustment as well as a quality improvement grant. And so, that increased the funds available for us to utilize within our program. The grant funding is 100% federal funding. So, if you look at the total award, that is what we have from the Office of Head Start. The non-federal share, um, which is typically 20% of the federal share, is what Clark County School District is responsible for. We do have a waiver in place which has reduced that non-federal share to the number you see here, which is $513,271. And that's largely met through matching work, you know, the custodial staff, the electricity, the work within our building, some of our local staff, such as our Pre-K staff that help support. And so, it's largely through matching. And it's also through volunteerism. So, parents who volunteer, there's an offset for our non-federal share with that as well. Within our five-year program goals, and if you have the opportunity to look through the presentation later, each of these hot links will take you directly to the Office of Early Learning's Knowledge Center. And so, it'll kind of give you a little more definition as to what's required for each of these areas. But the achievement gap will increase the percentage of Early Head Start children closing the achievement gap on the school readiness goals. It will, um, for our goal-oriented relationships, we'll engage in positive, ongoing, goal-oriented relationships with families so that they are prepared to support their children in kindergarten and beyond. And each of our families works on a family partnership goal. Preventative healthcare, we're increasing the percent of children obtaining preventative healthcare so that children are ready for kindergarten and beyond. That is both oral and physical healthcare. Nutrition, we are increasing family participation in community-based nutritional services and education. For our safety practices, we're strengthening the implementation of effective safety practices. And for Ursa, um, we're continuing to recruit, enroll, and retain eligible children at the most in need of our services. And our waiting list for Head Start and Early Head Start is a weighted, um, waiting list so that we make sure that the children, not only that we've recruited them and served them, but we're able to serve them for the duration of the program so that they are best served and able to participate in kindergarten and beyond. The idea being that we are eliminating some inequities and helping students and families to build a foundation. An important component of Head Start is that involves not just the student, but the families and the community in supporting students with their growth. These are early Head Start, Head Start metrics. You'll notice that in our baseline data is where we began at the beginning of this five-year cycle. And then our FY 2019 goals is the growth that we have demonstrated as we work toward our goals. Give you a moment. These are continuation of our goals. And noting, you know, we're be- we're seeing growth. One thing that you'll notice is the increase of our Early Head Start students who've obtained dental. They don't, are not actually required to have a dental exam until they're age three. Um, and so, that growth in that- And so that growth in that area is also dependent on the numbers of children that we have in the program that are actually that age of three. And one area, we have worked with our local community board. We're noticing that our WIC numbers across the county and within our program are lower than we would like to see. So we'd like to see an increase in the WIC and SNAP participation. And so we've worked together with the county board for a MOU so that we can do some more collaborative work and perhaps increase the enrollment of folks, both within our program and across our county in those programs. You can also click on the link here to see our specific school readiness goals in addition to our school improvement plan. Some of our advantages, you know, are obviously that, you know, we're able to provide that high-quality early education and give our students really a head start. You know, but it also helps promote that sort of cognitive, social, and emotional growth for our children. It supports the Clark County School District's mission, vision, our strategic priorities, and our theory of action. And it provides services in an area that our community has demonstrated in need. Some of the challenges, of course, is that we would always love to serve more children that as a community, we have needs for more spaces. You know, and honestly, of course, at the Early Learning Center, we're just flat-running out of real estate. But we're working with the facilities plan to be able to increase. Our organizational structure, this is sort of the Head Start version. If you, you know, sort of pull out the pieces and components of governance as far as Head Start sees it. So as the Board of Education, you are a governing body. Our Executive Director of Head Start is our Superintendent. I am her designee. It helps to serve and support the Head Start implementation. We have a Head Start Policy Council, which is somewhat similar to our LSGT. But that Policy Council helps work with and drive the programming. We have a parent committee that helps support the Policy Council. In fact, we had a policy or a parent committee meeting just today. And then we have several advisory councils and committees that help to support our work, but also to ensure that we have parent input and feedback into the programming, which is part of the design for Head Start and early Head Start. And so some of those committees are policy committee, but our health committee, we have parent leadership, school readiness committee, and recruitment committees. And of course, Office of Early Learning is a part of instructional services. So the direct supervisor, our chief academic officer, ensures that our work is aligned to the work of Clark County so that our students have a smooth transition as they move from early Head Start to Head Start to pre-K into kindergarten through 12th grade. And I think that's a huge advantage to having the programming within our school district is it allows for that smooth transition. And so you're asking yourself, what part of this do I get to play a part in? And really, the governance roles of the Board of Education as it pertains to the early Head Start and Head Start. You have the fiduciary responsibilities. One is to help manage those, ensure that our financial management and accounting and procedures are all in place. And a lot of that is through our policies and procedures as a board district. You also approve and deny our grant submissions and any amendments that we make. And so if we ever make an application, we will always bring it to the board for approval to submit. You also are expect, you will expect, and you get reports monthly that tell you sort of how we're utilizing the grant funds, what information we've gotten from the Office of Head Start, and also our numbers, our attendance, our tracking. And you'll continue to see those each month at the meetings. Our human resources, again, you're keeping and maintaining those human resource policies and procedures and help to ensure that we continue to have 100% of our staff who meet the requirements and fulfill their positions. And we appreciate the support we get from the Human Resources Department to be able to make that happen. Our department oversight, you can hold our executive director, our superintendent, our chief academic officer, and myself accountable for that continuous improvement. And you'll track that through our district strategic plan, but also through our school growth plan for the Office of Early Learning. You're also going to receive these annual trainings. You'll receive the minutes from our monthly meeting. And of course, you approve the Policy Council bylaws each year. And we also ensure with our community engagement oversight, to ensure that we have the community partnerships in place to serve our families and that you review our community assessment report and updates and approve the selection committee. And so all of that is a part of the work that you do directly, supporting the work that we do. We will have the focus area two, and that's part of that program management program management, our ongoing monitoring, and our continuous improvement. I've included the governance role in the program. It has a lot of information that you may wish to click through more completely. Talks about our legal responsibilities for ensuring that the grant activities respond to regulations and the terms and conditions of the grant itself, but also for the fiscal responsibility for ensuring that the funds are used prudently and according to regulations. And so our governance policies and your board policies help determine them. We have the human resources and personnel policies, our program manager, and quality improvement. And so we ensure that we're responsible and engaged, knowledgeable, and programmed for the five-year goals, but also that you continue to receive updates and information. As an elected board, you are not required to fulfill particular roles. If our governance board were assigned or selected, that you would need to have selected a lawyer, a fiscal person within the school district, because you are an elected board and because the district has a lawyer, a CFO, a CAO, then each of you fulfills the role in that governance team. Take a moment to pop us into the Head Start Governance and Management Responsibilities Venn diagram. I'm hoping you'll be able to see this quickly. But it gives us an idea of where the governing body has its role. Our Policy Council, made up entirely of parents and community members, has a role that crosses over. And then our management staff or our staff here within the building take action. And so all of these components work together to ensure that we're able to implement our program actively and well. And that all in the midst provide the leadership and the strategic direction for our programming. A couple of links that I've note. This bottom one is that Early Childhood Knowledge and Learning Center, which has answers to all things Head Start. If you ever have a question, we're happy to be a part of that, answering it for you or being a part of the conversations. But you're also, if you have a question, you're able to link here and search. It also has the management systems wheel, which gives you an idea of each of the components that are required within Head Start and early Head Start's management structure. We have several federal and state reviews that occur at the Office of Early Learning, but particularly within Head Start and early Head Start. We have the class review, which is a classroom assessment, environmental health and safety, fiscal integrity, our A133 audit, our comprehensive services, our leadership and governance, the advanced ed, which is now Cognia, the early learning monitoring, and then Focus Area One Monitoring Review. All of these, we've come through with zero audit findings, so we're very proud of that. Upcoming, within sort of the next six to 18 months, will be a Focus Area Two Monitoring Review. We do not have a date for that monitoring yet, but we know that it will be coming with, before the end of our five-year cycle. And many of you will be invited to be a part of that process. And we would appreciate your being able to participate when asked. And more importantly, noting that this is a component of that audit is that we annually make sure that we've talked through, walked through the governance expectations. Our next steps for within our government, year-round, we're implementing the program. We have ongoing monitoring, data analysis, and our monthly reports that we provide to you. And then we kind of, each month, we go through step by step. You're all, of course, invited at your leisure to attend our community assessment updates and self-assessment meetings that we'll have during February or March. We do the annual assessment. Policy Council will review, revise, and assist with the creation of the grant. And then as a board in May, you will approve our community assessment and the grant reapplication, which is due on June the first. And then, of course, annually, we have the board trainings and a presentation of the program. And I know that that was very fast. The idea of keeping it somewhat brief. There are questions at this time?
There are a few questions, Ms. Higgins and Mr. Gaskins, in the chat. If you all want to start, I know some about facilities and funding and how additional classrooms are funded. If we have facilities, will we get the classroom costs covered? So if you want to look over those, I know they came, they populated while you were presenting. But if you want to look over those and try to answer.
Yes, we are working with our students virtually, as well as the district. And I have said to many times and to many different groups, if you told me six months ago you could teach preschool online, I might have laughed you out of the room. But I have to give our teachers and staff credit. They're doing an amazing job of engaging students in a variety of methodologies. You know, it's funny, when we went back face-to-face, we had a parent who was like, I don't know how they're going to do. They've thought all this, you know, the whole beginning of the year, that they were the only child in the classroom because it was just them talking with the teacher on the iPad when they got in the room and figured out there were 20 other people there. But we know that teaching face-to-face is ideal. And that's where, of course, we want to be as soon as it's safe for us to return. But for now, all of our families do have iPads. We do have the ability to engage with instructors synchronously with their teacher. But we also have a number of asynchronous activities and independent portions of the day because, of course, it's not appropriate for our students to be online for six and a half hours a day. Even, so our teachers are providing some synchronous instruction where teachers, students are involved directly with the teacher through the iPad, but also some where they're working independently or working with parents on additional activities. And so, Dr. Yager, yes, as you'll remember, we did apply for an expansion grant. If we are able to earn that grant, then we would have increased funds to increase our seating. We also have the ability to request an increased seating within our pre-K program. We did a couple of years ago, request two additional classrooms within our pre-K grant. And so it would be a matter of us applying for additional opportunities for our students. Our increase to the budget would just be to our in-kind match, which would be that 20%. And as far as the facilities, it would be the responsibility, our responsibility to provide those facilities. But the seats and the ongoing cost of providing services would be on the grant itself.
Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the cost of providing the facilities is for that, the vast majority of that 20% in-kind contribution, correct?
Yes, yes, that if we provide the facilities and a portion of our 20% is in fact the facilities that we provide. Thank you for mentioning that. And thank you, Attorney Hall, for noting, as someone with a pre-K, or she can tell you that they have the iPads and the headphones and the school supplies. And we do have periodic supply pickup because, as you can well imagine, a lot of our work involves paper and pencil and cutting and activities that require additional supplies. Right, are there any other questions that you may have? Right, thank you so much for your time. I know it's late and I appreciate your attention to detail during this training. And please note that if you have any questions at any further point, I am happy to and available.
I had, I had one question that was in the, I'm sorry. What is the typical waitlist for early Head Start and Head Start during non-COVID periods?
So it's typically hovers anywhere between 75 and 200 for each individual program. And so at the beginning of the school year, there typically is a much lower number that are, I shouldn't say that. We're typically by July completely full in pre-K, Head Start, and early Head Start. And our numbers start to grow at that point as we build our waitlist with additional families that are interested in services that perhaps either weren't available or didn't register prior to that point. That early Head Start and Head Start programs do have a weighted waitlist, which means that if you are, have higher risk points, then you would move up on the list even if you signed up at a later date. Pre-K itself is a pure first-come, first-served. It is not income eligible with the Head Start, early Head Start program. It is income eligible, so they must meet all income requirements. And then it is based and weighted on risk factors. This year, there just simply isn't. I would anticipate that COVID is reducing numbers across the nation and certainly across Georgia. We've noted that that's true across our early learning programs.
But what I hear you saying is that a focus on increasing capacity within the programs should be something that is considered heavily in the future?
Yes, ma'am. Across our county, we have generally about 4,500 children under the age of five. And we only have childcare seating for less than 2,500 as a community. So it is a high-level need within our community. And, you know, of course, a certain number of those, we're going to stay home with families anyway. Some were going to stay with extended families, some have alternate plans. But if you look at the number of seat, of childcare seats that are available, not even early learning seats or options that are available, there just aren't enough seats in our community to serve the need across. options that are available, there just aren't enough seats in our community to serve the need across our community. And so it's something that we continue to know that is a need for our community in general, but for our students in particular. Our waitlists have demonstrated, it's not just a community need, it's something they're seeking.
Karen, I remember in the entire time I've been on the board, there's always been that waitlist of about that size. But at one point, I remember a consistent number of around six thousand students that we were trying to serve in this region. The forty-five hundred is a new number for me. Can you tell me what that may be coming from?
It's, we have increased the services for our pre-K, which has helped reduce some of those numbers. And also there are just fewer children right now in that four and underage range. We are seeing a growing number of children, but there was, over the last several years have been fewer four-year-olds. Not by thousands, but by hundreds within the last couple of years, probably in part due to the recession. And now we're seeing that number begin to grow again. And so, you know, it was sort of that flip in the community assessment radar. We saw a sort of a two or three year drop in the numbers of children, you know, from twelve hundred to closer to nine hundred children in those age ranges. And we're seeing that grow up again.
Thank you. That's encouraging.
Any other questions that you may have? And I apologize for looking back and forth. I have two screens open and I can see you on one screen and I'm looking to be face to face with you on the other screen. So I apologize for that sort of tennis view. Right, well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. And again, if you have any questions, we're happy to be a part of that. And we invite you at any time you are interested to join us for our policy council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Higgins. She does an amazing job with all of our early programs. Like Miss Cole said, I think I'm also partial. I spoke with that team yesterday and they really are the foundation of our work for elementary school. And you can truly tell when children have had early learning exposure in our programs when they enter into kindergarten. So thank you and your team for an amazing job. So now we can take a deep breath and we go into our next presentation. And I'm sure this one is going to come with a lot of questions and conversation as well. We have Chief Sizemore here. It is time for us to do a renewal of our memorandum of understanding with ACCPD. He's going to present along with Dr. Watley on our CCSD Public Safety and Student Supports Program and Model. And then we will welcome your questions and your thoughts related to that. And I've received some feedback from Mr. Davis already. And of course, we've all given thought to that. We're very cognizant of our current social and political climate and recognize what moving trends are at this time. And I, you know, also have some thoughts on how we can move forward with that work. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Sizemore and Dr. Watley to present.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to have an opportunity to share with you about what we do within the Clark County School District Police Department. And particularly about the external and internal partnerships we have with Athens Clark County Police Department and with Student Support Services to try to, or ensure that we are consistent with our mission. And our mission is to provide and maintain a safe and secure environment for students, staff, faculty, parents and visitors of the district's facilities and collaborate with community partners as well as local, state and federal public safety. In short, we work with staff and other partners to maintain a safe environment so that our children can learn and also so that parents will be comfortable and have confidence that their children are safe at school. The one of the primary partnerships we have is with the Athens Clark County Police Department. It's very important that school resource officers, they play an important role in maintaining and increasing safety, not only at the school, but in the neighborhood surrounding it. We're very aware and understand of the national concerns about the presence of police in our schools. As a community, we've been fortunate to have a collaborative relationship which supports students. And we have not had significant incidents of inappropriate engagement between officers and students. To the contrast, our relationship history has allowed for the prevention of those types of issues. And I'll talk a little more about the history in a little bit. But basically how that, that plays out between community and, and police, one of the advantages out of our out of this is that we communicate regularly because ACCPD is in our schools. When incidents happen out in the community, maybe on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday that could negatively impact our students on Monday, they're there to tell us and to let us know and communicate with us and share that information so that we can equip the principals and, and our staff with what they need to know to try to prevent those challenges from blowing up within our school. So that's, that's an important part. They also are very valuable in that a lot of information, so social media threads, different things that come through. We've received information both from the county police, from the GBI, and even on occasion from the FBI. And they've always helped us, no matter the hour, to put together a plan to mitigate those circumstances and frequently offer a great deal of, of help in dispelling the alarm so that kids can continue to learn and not, that there won't be as much or as great of a disruption. The school resource officers help educate students and parents about safety issues while protecting them and preventing inappropriate behavior on school campuses. The primary or the three things that officers engage in is counseling, mentoring, law enforcement and law-related education. While safety and security are paramount to both students and staff, the community, the community, we recognize that certain, the community, we recognize that certain for mental health developmental stages of youth and diverse need of staff. It's in, we work, the other internal partner for us is student services. And as far as counseling and mentoring and trying to prevent inappropriate behavior in the future, we work very closely with Student Support Services to try to accomplish that through meetings and just through regular contact regarding incidents in our schools. And with that, Dr. Watley?
Yes. And so in keeping with that, our goal is to provide a proactive services to address the emotional and mental health and the well-being of our students. So the division of Student Support Services encompasses the areas of school social work, school psychology, of course, school nursing, but the ones that would be most relevant to this piece. And also counseling, which sits in the Office of School of Academics. As you can see here, the counseling department, they provide some social, emotional, learning supports to students and staff. And then as mentioned earlier, I'm really taking a look at how we can build out our school services, school social, social work services. And they address the barriers that impede the family's ability to access resources. However, as of recent, we rolled out a new initiative that the school social workers hold and drive within this district. And that is when students return from restricted placements such as juvenile, juvenile detention centers or even mental health places, they come back through a case management consultation process, which brings all of the necessary people to the table to discuss the child so that we can make sure those appropriate supports are in place. Some of the people that will sit on that team or have sat on that team would include the psychologists, the principal, the administrators, the special ed person if the student has an IEP. All of these people come prior to the student coming back and that's kind of helped. We've had a couple of cases that have recently test drove this process. And the feedback has been great in terms of that team management and helping to provide support to students. Now also here, we have the school psychologists. They also provide psychoeducational assessments and then also designing academic and behavioral interventions. Ultimately, this is, you know, looking at a more comprehensive approach towards safety and security in conjunction with Student Support Services. And Chief Sizemore.
Okay. What you see here, in addition, in addition to working with our school support team, Clark County School District and ACCPD officers receive other training to prepare for working with youth. The training outline here provides SROs with the behavior and psychological tools to address challenging behaviors. Training on crisis intervention, really the training in each one of these is a lot about de-escalation. And that's one of the primary tools of any police officer, but particularly any, but particularly in the schools. Because we spend so much time trying to de-escalate situations, fights, people that are angry and, and sometimes parents. The school resource officer training is an eighty-hour course that the, the county has made it mandatory that all the school resource officers attend. The, the fair and impartial policing is, is one that we've all had and, and gone to along with the county. Cultural diversity, crisis intervention, policing the teen brain was one in particular that the county engaged in. I think Dr. Gant came to at least a portion of that. And that was almost twenty-four hours of training about how to de-escalate children with different learning issues or, or disabilities that we could learn how to de-escalate all those with a lot of practical exercise in this really good program. Of course, we train together on active shooter response. And the, the county has a great program that they were utilizing, at least up until we, we left left school last March, they were, are, were doing that out at Cole Middle School. But it's the great program, which is gang resistance, education and training. And that, I won't go into the, all the details, but there's a lot about de-escalation, you know, in terms of students and about making wise decision and wise choices.
Chief Sizemore, can I say something right here too about the training? I just want to highlight some of the trainings that we hope to collaborate with the department on our trauma-informed practices, restorative practices and social emotional learning. You know, our society right now is moving towards more of a trauma-informed practice in terms of how we manage in children and how we respond to children. Now that we know more about adverse childhood experiences, we understand more of the neurological implications to that. And so the knowledge that the psychologists, the knowledge that the social workers and the counselors have, we want to leverage that support and provide that sort of support to our SRO clubs and ACCPD. And also to help just in sense, understand more the not only developmental sequence of where our students are, but also understanding some of the traumas that they have been involved in and been exposed to and being sensitive to those, even in a de-escalation process.
Thank you. Also, I know that we have three new members, but it, I think it would be good for everyone to hear about the history of how we got to where we're at. Of course, student staff safety and security has always been a priority. But the police have actually been in the schools going back to the eighties, even though I, I started with Athens Police Department, which later turned into Athens Clark County Police Department. And we worked in the schools from the very time that I came to the department in nineteen eighty-six. We worked in the high schools regularly and, and pretty frequently in the middle schools. And it became such, so regular that it evolved into the MOU in with Athens Clark County for the first year, I think was in two thousand. I got a lot of this information from Chief Platt. But it was in two thousand when this MOU originated. It was formalized in a relationship. You know, when, when I worked in the high schools, it was kind of a signup list and, and they would need a police officer at the school and people would sign up. And you know, if you didn't do a good job, they wouldn't ask you back, but there really wasn't any looking into who's, who's coming. Are they really good with kids or anything like that? So they formalized this so that they would have the same police officer there all the time to build positive relationships. And is a critical part of it. Other things that contributed to that, well, in two thousand eight, that, you know, the officers were in the schools, but in two thousand eight, they changed the Chief Platt's title from security director to a chief of police. And they did that for a couple of reasons. One of them was that the, the county was having a difficulty staffing all the schools. And that led to some particular challenges. There was an individual went to one of our middle schools and accosted or approached a child. And, and there was not a police officer there. And then another one, there was a firearm in the alternative school. So at that time, the board, the superintendent decided that they needed to create their own police department to make sure they could fill in any gaps. Next slide. Next. Thank you. These are the qualifications for SRO. Now in this instance, I'm talking about the Athens Clark County Police Officers. They have to be a post-certified officer. Critical is that they're able to demonstrate an ability to work with young people. They've got to be able to build positive relationships. And that's very important. They need an associate of arts or science degree is preferred. And considerations includes their job knowledge, appearance, attitude and bearing. And by bearing, we want someone that's approachable. We want someone, we don't want a police officer that doesn't speak. I mean, they may be a great person, very knowledgeable, but we want someone that can engage with kids and will be approachable if they have problems or need to share share information with the police. We also have a selection process and it's important to note in that selection process that the only officers that work in the school are ones that ask to work there. At the police department, there's three shifts. You may get assigned a midnight shift and you may not want to go to midnight shift, but that's your assignment and you have to go there. The schools are different. They have to request for that and they have to be vetted through interviews. We have an interview panel of school district, would be myself, the affected principal, maybe Assistant Chief Reed or the other resource officer. We interview them and make a recommendation to the ACCPD police for, for assignment. And, and they have to put in for it. We, we don't let anyone, they don't even work there temporarily if they don't want to be in the school and haven't been vetted. They also, the principal, if they're dissatisfied with the SRO that they have, they can request to have another. Now, of course, it's, it's not quite like in any job situation, you try to resolve any differences or anything first. But, and, and normally that hasn't, has not been a problem. And the SROs are employees of ACCPD and are subject to their administration, supervision and control. So they have, I'll, I'll go over that. I'll show you a picture in a minute, what unit they work under and we'll go over that. They are allocated in the schools in the following manner. In the high schools, you have one Athens Clark County officer matched with one Clark County School District Police Officer, along with four unarmed security officers. The middle schools each have one ACCPD officer. And then the elementary schools are patrolled by myself, Assistant Chief Reed and and the officer who also works at the HT Edwards Campus, when he can break out, is one of our KPIs. We try to get to every elementary school within a day. And we also try to engage with those kids as much as we can and try to have, have positive time with them. time with them. And we also have a night patrol, unarmed security officer. The, obviously, the high schools have a larger staff. The reason for that is their campuses are so large. And the campus is large, the student body is large and it's an older population. And there's just a lot more traffic going and coming. And I want to mention too, that we can't discount, I'll tell you a really important element of this, is those unarmed officers, they play a critical role in helping us secure the properties. And they, they're available, if they run across something that they need a police officer for, they have a radio and they can call us and we can have someone respond. The duties, there's actually a duties agreement that is signed between the ACCPD SRO and the principal. And to kind of define what it is that they're supposed to do. They're not just there without any direction from the school. You know, just there in the school. They're to be a visible law enforcement figure and deal with matters and code violations. But they are not the disciplinarian. And that's a role that we, we have to make sure. If they see something that's a violation, they're not going to ignore it. They would stop it and they may wind up being a, you know, some type of witness, but that's the school's responsibility to handle the discipline. They also report cases that occur on campus. You know, there's certain cases, it's mandated that they be reported to the police and they are available to take those reports. They coordinate all their actions through the principal's office. And they also, if officers from another agency or from Athens Clark County want to come to the school and interview a kid or talk to them, they inform them of the policy. They would vet that. They can only do that if it's something really critical or could be a danger, a danger to the school, not just for a a normal investigation or something, because when they're at school, we want them learning, not, you know, not the police coming in and interviewing them at that time. Another important part I don't want to leave out, they're also, when they're at those schools, these are some examples of situations that we've had happen. Just last year, two that occurred, over at Kroger on Alps Road, a situation broke out with a person with a gun. The school resource officer that was at Clark Middle heard the radio traffic, you know, obviously he's got his radio tuned to that side of town. He heard the radio traffic and was able to put the school on a administrative hold. I still try to say soft lockdown. But put it on administrative hold to and get all the kids off the playground until that situation was dealt with. And that kind of thing happens with some frequency. There was a shooting in Rock Springs. And the SRO, I don't recall either heard the shots or was made aware of and acted quickly with the administration to do the same thing. And it was close to time for the buses to come and people to get out of school. That kind of thing could spill over onto our campus. And that's one of the, one of the positive attributes. There to be a classroom education source on approved materials like great that I spoke about. We want them to be in the class and have have positive time with students. Have them associate with students in a good, positive way. They're a resource for parents and students. You know, a lot of times, parents will share with the resource officer what kind of problems they may be having. And the resource officer may be in a position to talk with that person and develop a relationship with them. And another important thing is that the principal and the SRO develop plans to prevent and mitigate dangerous situations. This plays in, unfortunately, they spend a good bit of time doing this. When we have threats that come in, you know, via social media or something like that, it's the principal and the SRO that are trying to run those things down. When there's an issue between students where they think there may be a fight, they're running that down and trying to prevent those things from happening. There's also been instances both, both last year, there was one instance and the year before where firearms were within our high schools. And the team, in one instance, the principal and the administration learned about it. And they were able to work with law enforcement to quickly mitigate that situation. And in the other instance, the police officer learned about it, shared it with the administration. And as a team, they took action and they were able to take care of that situation and no one was injured. They're a resource for ACCPD police officers about school issues. That mostly pertains to, you know, special events like football games or, you know, keep them apprised of the days that the school will be let out early so that they can, you know, make sure kids are getting home safely. They participate in school affairs as a member of the staff and sit in on staff conferences. They're to be alert to new and to improve the SRO program. They, one of the things that they've done out at Hillsman Middle School, Jared Johnson and the principal worked together even during the pandemic so that he could be available for some of the classes they were having so that he could still continue to try to develop relationships with them. And another thing they do every year is their police camp. Well, every year they didn't, they didn't do it this year because of the pandemic. Next. This is, these are some of the officers, if you've been in our schools, these are some of the SROs that work with us. The top left, Tony Howard is pictured, but for him, he's leaving to go to the Sheriff's Department with the election of John Q. Williams. But we have Jared Johnson, Tim Clark, Jesus Marsden, Jeremiah Theis, Jerry Johnson, Harold Kitchens, Claude Johnson and Jonathan Owens. But they, these are officers that are all assigned to the schools for supervision. Not pictured John Johnson or Charles Burgundy. We've actually got, we've actually got four Johnsons there, which is a little hard to keep up with. And three of them are Jays, John Johnson, Jerry Johnson, Jared Johnson and Claude Johnson. There's some benefits to the memorandum of understanding. For us, cost-wise, the memorandum, it doesn't exceed $325,000. That's the top that we pay for six trained police officers. Their cars, their uniforms, their radios, all of that equipment. If you could replace that, and I'll cover a couple of reasons why it would even be difficult to replace that with money, it would start up at least at $850,000. And that may be a low figure. We only have to pay for the school days. And we're not paying for the days that we're doing distance learning. If SRO is absent, they have to provide one that is suitable. You know, if one of us is absent, we just don't have somebody there, but they provide someone to be in the school that day. And again, that's going to be someone that wants to be there and has been vetted. Other things, maybe not necessarily that are with the MOU, but the dispatch and the 911. We share records management system with them where we write our police reports. I can go in and look at Athens Clark County Police Reports and see what's going on on particular calls and see where our students may be involved in it. And that may require, like I said, if there was a fight or something like that, we may need to know about that so we can try to prevent anything from starting up at the school. We store our evidence there. And they also have the community outreach programs that are good. And then other benefits, we don't pay for their vehicles and we don't pay for any corrective maintenance. We train together and they have all been trained. Since they're certified, they've been to the 11-week Police Academy. They've been to additional training. So we didn't have to get that certification for them. Paying benefits are managed by Athens Clark County. And of course, on occasion, we don't have a criminal investigation division with our department, but they have one. When those occasions come up, that there needs to be a criminal investigation. They have a staff that they can, they can do that with and we can work with to get that completed. And I talked about, you know, they replace attrition if somebody resigns or is not available, they'll replace. That's all I have. Do we have questions?
Yes, I have several questions about the MOU first being who drafts the content of that MOU. Being a juvenile court attorney, I get to see the negative consequences of how some of these policies place students on the school-to-prison pipeline. And so I'm interested in knowing who drafts that content so that we can change those policies that are actually harming our students.
The MOU, I think, is available and posted. It is simply a two-page document that defines what the county will do in assigning police officers into the school.
So if we wanted to address things like police officers using this ability to come into the schools for criminal investigations, for things that don't happen on school property and students being penalized for that, where would we go? What will we do to disrupt those negative policies? Would that be in the duty section? Would that be in a policy section? Where are those contained and who authors those?
Well, it's our policy that they don't, they're not permitted to come on. And that's been policy for a long time, even over, even over Athens Clark County. When I started years ago, you know, it wasn't uncommon to go to the school to interview a child because you you knew that's where they were at and you could find them. But that, that is a policy and it stopped them probably 20 years ago. The only time that they would be able to come and do that was in a very critical, you know, something that might be a danger to the school right then. There was an occasion where it's been about, I think, four or five years ago, where they learned that a student had a, had a, committed some armed robberies. And there was a weapon like, very likely at the school. So they worked with the administration and they were able to recover the weapon at the school.
And Attorney Hall, and I see Lawrence put the policy LDAJA is up for review. Right now, the policies that I'm working on, on my committee, we are reviewing that specific policy right now. That has to do with interrogations and investigations. And I think Lawrence did put in what the policy says as of now, but I definitely think it needs to be revised.
I think to address Attorney Hall's question, so more than a MOU issue, we need to we have it as a CCSD policy, but like with many policies, there are many policies. And so that should be something that maybe between Dr. Watley and Mr. Gaskins, that we need to ensure is covered when we do our beginning of the year PL and updates with our building principals so that they are aware of what that policy is and what they need to do if there's any action or effort to violate that policy.
Thank you. And I would just maybe encourage you to consider thinking outside of just the district, but possibly consulting with or speaking with to get a perspective from the juvenile court judges or the juvenile public defenders who are actually seeing how some of these policies are being abused and harming our students. And so I know they can't give you, you know, like they can't tell you what to do, right? But they can give you a different perspective to make sure that these policies are truly being reflected and acted upon as you want them to be. The spirit and the intent is there and not being abused.
We're open to input from all those sources to develop policies that are going to benefit our kids.
Did we not have a, I thought we had a big community meeting last year, a year before maybe, where we did have to take a look at, or we sat down with community members and members of other organizations that were asking for reform in our SRO policies. It seems to me like there was a big study or something that was done just last year. And out of that, I know the recommendation came that we wouldn't bring in our own police force, that we would continue our relationship with Clark County. But I thought that that was driven by community input on our policing practices. So I don't want us to lose sight of work that's already been done, but I don't think it's something that stops either. I think it's something that needs to be an ongoing conversation as situations change in the community.
Can I ask about the role of the board in reviewing some of the metrics that the SROs collect with regards to disciplinary actions and contact with students in the schools? Does the board have a role at all in sort of reviewing how often this occurs, whether this is a positive experience or relationship that each of the schools have in regard, et cetera? I just feel like I do not have any information at all that, to form any opinion one way or the other. And it would be really helpful to know what the board knows presently and what we need to know moving forward to be able to really discuss this issue with the with the detail and attention that it needs.
So part of our key performance indicators a year ago involved Chief Sizmore maintaining metrics on the types of incidents that the SROs and CCSD police were involved in calls that were received, many of which were calls that actually came through the 911 dispatch, weren't even involving Clark County. But sometimes they were on our property, like a person was pulled over, someone was stopped trespassing and it had nothing to do with us. But that data is maintained and that is something that we could easily provide for the board on a monthly basis if that is something you would like to have. The data, I don't want to say surprisingly, because we've had a good relationship with ACCPD as well as the training for our own officers. But there have, the data is not extreme at all in terms of involvement. But that's something we could, Dr. Anderson, easily get to you all on a monthly basis.
So do we still have to do federal reporting on, maybe I'm confusing this with school disciplinary things that came up? Because I remember seeing some reports that carry incidents in our school as a part of safety or something.
Yes, and I think, Ms. Duke, does that come through your office or the student records reporting when there are significant incidents, suspensions, weapons, those types of things that have to be reported to the state?
Yes, those are all reported on student record in June.
So
I remember seeing those in the past. I just haven't seen one lately.
Seen what in the past? I couldn't hear.
I remember getting those reports. It seemed like we got them quarterly or something at some point, but we used to get those incident reports.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Yes, Dr. Thomas and Chief Sizmore. My questions, and I've got a number of them too, but I want to start out with in terms of the financial commitment. My understanding, the only way that math, mathematically, if My understanding, the only way that math, that mathematically, if, if, if what we're saying, it costs, um, one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to, to put each of those six officers, if we were to replace them. And, um, in actuality, we're paying fifty-four thousand. The money's coming from someplace. And my understanding is that it's being supplemented by the, by the county government. And I don't know to what degree, um, but I do know that there are commissioners that, um, in fact, this month want to raise the issue of is this a wise investment from their standpoint? So I guess that part of my, part of my question is, um, is the financial piece. But then if, if I expand it to another, in another direction, it, it kinda speaks to the same thing. And that is what's being talked about on the county level is that, um, and again, talking to commissioners in particular, that police officers are being asked, is finally occurring to people that police officers are being asked to do too much. In other words, there to be, um, uh, relationship counselors in domestic, uh, abuse situations or, or, or some type of, uh, marital dispute. Um, there to be mental health, um, therapists when they, when they are, are being confronted with someone that has a mental illness. And so the direction that, that I see the Clark County going, Clark County government going over time and what's happening in others, other districts. And obviously it's because of a lot of the stuff that made the news is to try to bring on board folks that have a certain skill set that is, that would be more appropriate than to have a police officer whose bottom line is there to, to protect. And, um, and, and that doesn't, and, and it's not, not that we don't want police officers to, to be, uh, well-trained and, and, um, you know, using matters of de-escalation. But the bottom line is they're, you know, they're, they are trained to, to, to protect by any means necessary themselves and the public. And so I'm, I'm concerned that, that, that the school by, by maintaining this contract is kinda going into, into a different direction or maintaining a different direction. And that is that we wanna take a police officer who's, who's, who's trained bottom line to protect and, and by all means necessary themselves and, and, and the, the lives of the citizens agree. And we're, we're then saying, well, yes, you've got that skill set. And yes, you know, you are well-prepared to, to institute on that level or anything less than that. But at the same time, we're putting you in the position of being a counselor and, and, and working on mental health issues. So in other words, in, in the schools, we're asking more of the police officers. But it, but the county and other, uh, communities are going in the opposite direction in terms of police officers are there, um, not to, not to be counselors in the community. Um, not to be therapists in the community. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to weigh those, those two things.
So, and I'll allow Chief Sizemore to speak, um. I would be curious to know then what that means even for the model of community-oriented policing. And I'm not sure if we are asking our officers to be counselors or mental health therapists? Or are we asking them to be relationship developers and to recognize when individuals have mental health, therapeutic or other needs? And to ensure that they are engaging the right professionals to support those students in that role? Um, so I don't think we're asking them. Now, we are asking that they be trained in understanding and recognizing how, again, the teenage brain works. How, um, interacting with, with children and those with mental health needs works. But I don't think we're asking them to be the one to then provide that service. We're asking them to have an awareness and an understanding so to address just what you said. So that they don't approach it from a, we're coming in just to regain order. Because that's not the model of, um, schoolwork. But I hope that's not the model of community work either. And that's why I have liked a, a community-oriented policing model. Because it is about getting to know the community, because these same children um, are in our communities. And I would hope that when any of my fourteen thousand walk off of a Clark County property and enter their home property, that they still are approached with a level of sensitivity and understanding and that the response, unless there is an immediate threat of harm and danger to someone. But I would hope that an officer who interacts with any of our children away from school would still utilize some attempt to, um, de-escalate, some attempt to connect, some attempt to rationalize with, some attempt to engage with our children, whether they're in our building or away. So I hear what you're saying, but I, I think that can go a lot of different ways, um. And so I would, that's conversation I would love to know more about. Because if the attitude is that basically what I'm hearing you saying is they're there. Well, I don't wanna say it's very graphic, um, their purpose is solely to protect by any means necessary. We're going to be in a place of even more problems than what we've had, um, nationally, if that's the model that, you know, policing is going to. But that's a, that's a sidebar and I think, you know, we can discuss that. But I, I, I would, I would just hope that that's not how any of our children would be treated on campus or away from campus. And yes, uh, I don't know if that was you, Dr. Yeager, or whomever, we can get that information. Dr. Watley can share Dr. Richard Welch's report.
I am. I'm about to send it to you, Dr. Yeager. I just saw you're asking me the Welsh report.
But, uh, but I understand what you're saying, Mr. Davis. A lot is being asked of, of our officers, um.
There, may I, may I interject one thing?
Yes.
Uh, it is inaccurate to say that they're trained to protect by any means necessary. Uh, police are governed by rules. Uh, we've seen in places where those rules were violated, but there were rules. And, uh, there are policies that we train on and follow. Uh, so I'm not, I just don't wanna leave that as necessarily being accurate.
Yeah, I don't, uh, Chief Sizemore, I, I understand that, that, that the vast majority of police officers are very decent people. And I'm not, I, I don't, I don't want you to think that I'm, I'm, I'm insinuating anything different. It's just that it's, it's, you know, I was trained to be a, be a school teacher. You know, and I can see that how in many parts of my, of my life, I exhibit that those skills that I, that I learned as a school teacher. You know, and, and, um, and the way I come across and, and the way I perceive things. I, I've, I've never been a police officer, um. But I would assume that with a lot of heavy training and years of experience, there is a certain perspective that, that is, that is part of being a police officer. Now, obviously you've got a few people who will, who will have a, a completely distorted view of that. But, um, I'm just getting back to two things. One is what would happen if, if the county were to say, we would rather put, instead of putting more money in this direction, what we wanna do is we wanna set up, cause they, the, the, the county, and this is answered to your, uh, comment, Dr. Thomas, county has set up, uh, units of, of counselors who are, who are the actually operating twenty-four seven. Um, and there is, there's a lot of discussion in, in, of course, in the, in the country, but including locally about expanding that type of program. Um, and I'm, I'm just, um, I'm just on the financial aspect of it, I don't, presumably this contract that the, that, that the police department has already signed their side of it, or presumably. Um, but my understanding is that the county commission hasn't looked at it yet for this coming year. But, and, but the other thing is, is in putting so much, I mean, it seems like that the difficulties that we've, that, that we've had to some degree is regardless of, of, of how much, um, extra trainers, when they're confronted with a, um, person serving, uh, suffering some type of mental breakdown, may not be the best person to be there on the scene. Or, or if they're very, very agitated, but without a weapon, they may not be the best person on the scene. So I'm just, I'm just raising that as a philosophical question, but then also raising the, the, the financial piece of it so that we understand that, that that the funding, you know, the argument that you're making about how much money we would save um, by working with the, with the, um, Athens Police Department may, may change. Um, but I don't know where, where everything is in terms of negotiations, but anyway, thank you.
That's very good insight, Mr. Davis, to hear and to know because, um, and I, I personally and professionally believe we're at a place where we need to begin evaluating the model, evaluating the services and evaluating the most appropriate way to support the needs of our, our students and our staff. And, um, you know, looking at it from the perspective, even if we just looked at it financially, like you said, that might not be an option. So we're going to have to start considering other ways to provide that support and not saying, um, supporting it in the same structure that it currently exists. You know, this might not be the most effective structure. Um, there, you know, are always other ways as we've learned through the pandemic. There are other ways to address issues. And sometimes we look at things from a traditional model because it's tradition. It's what we're most comfortable with. It's our go-to, but it might not be the most effective. And what was most effective ten or fifteen years ago might not be what's most effective today or next year. And so I think this is a good time for us to step back and really look at what is the intent and what is the need? And then how do we most effectively address that need for our students and for our staff? And so, you know, you, um, bringing to light that, you know, we might not even have the option of that funding moving forward, um, helps to, to really show us that this is an excellent time to begin looking at how we are supporting students and staff in Clark County schools and you know, how we need to move forward with that.
I, um, ask, well, not ask, but just a couple of things. As it relates to funding and, um, you know, officers, I do think it's helpful, you know, if in fact, funding may be an issue and that funding may not be there, that would be something that's great for the school district to know. And I think that goes back to our building relationships across governing bodies. That, you know, if that is something that has been in the back of people's minds, then that is something that should be shared with the school board. Because, you know, we all have our, you know, varying opinions about, um, well, police in general and then our set of officers. But, you know, there's this whole other aspect out there of, you know, getting feedback from parents, getting feedback from principals and leaders and things like that. And, you know, it sort of puts people in a peculiar place, you know? Unless you've been in a high school, you don't know what, you know, you sort of don't know what you may not know. And so I'm not, you know, necessarily defending. I do understand, well, one, the history of police in America. So I, you know, we can't ignore that, that, I mean, there's a racial history that's, uh, built on, you know, supremacy, uh, and a whole lot of other things, racism and oppression. Um, and so I'm not as, you know, naive to believe that, you know, that filters into some of the work that, that can filter into some of the work that we do. I also know, you know, that, um, you know, the set of officers that we have, um, while certainly not perfect, um, I do sort of see some of their work, um, and see them as an outlier of sorts. Um, it doesn't mean that, you know, we don't have situations and so, um, but, you know, those are just like some of the things to consider. And then the larger picture, when you go back to not necessarily the need for police in America, but when you look in, inside of schools and this, and how we use our officers, but really looking at the larger picture of school safety, not necessarily from students, but from people, um, outside. And we know generally schools are safe places overall, but when they're, until they're not, you know, that's typically when we see the, the flare-up of data. And so I don't know, I just, it's just a few things, you know? I think Greg, Mr. Davis, it goes back to like those collaborations um, and building capacity as a, as two governing bodies. That if there, you know, ongoing conversations that need to be happening, that's about funding, then that is something that the, uh, Athens Clark County, I would expect them to, um, you know, continue to reach out about that. But then also that even we would be sure that we're gathering stakeholder data as well. Understanding that there is no perfect, you know, there is no way to hide the history of policing in America. But might there or is there, you know, what does it look like in our system? And the degree to which we can impact that. Um, and so I heard that you mentioned like with trainings and things like that, and you're absolutely right. You know, when people get into mental health situations, and not just mental health situations by and large, I, i- in the world, when they encounter black people, you know, there, there, there tends to be a breakdown and, and people are treated, um, there, there are different outcomes. And, you know, we don't really know a lot about the training, right? That training can't, you can't train a lot of this, you know, out of people in one training. But one unique thing that we have is the training that we offer, um, not just our CCSD officers, but that we require and that other officers from the county get. So I also see policy as well as trainings as opportunity. If we continue, be it with four officers, three or two, but to really, really be able to build capacity there, um, as well.
Dr. Gann, I have to use, um, the phrase from Mr. Gaskins earlier. I think you looked on my paper. So you took, you took everything I was going to say, so, um, you said exactly what I was going to say. Uh, there are real issues.
All right.
In Georgia, um, that we cannot, we cannot deny. And yet I don't want to project what's happening nationally um, on some of the officers we have here who are amazing. I watch what they do for kids. I watch how they mentor and how they work with our children. Um, you know, I think what Mr., uh, Chief Sizemore said about, they want to be there. And again, but it is not perfect and we've made some mistakes and some things have gone wrong. And, um, there are some things we definitely need to address just because of the culture we live in. Um, but the flip of that is we do have some very committed officers. And the other thing I had written on my, my paper was about training and, um, I had written this earlier today. And we, we need to do this carefully and it needs to be thought out. But I had written, we need to engage all stakeholders, so we need to talk to the community, but we need to talk to teachers. We need to talk to school leaders. I wanna talk to students and hear how they feel. Um, uh, and I, I think it's important to get voices from everyone because it is very easy to assume that we know how someone feels, but we don't have their life experiences. And we can project what we feel, um, on someone based on assumptions we have or based on what we've seen in the media or what we've read or what has happened to us. But I, I want to be careful that we are not making decisions in either direction um, without ensuring that we have gotten the voices of, of others. And then I'm equally concerned that if this is something where there's the potential that funding is going to be eliminated immediately, we have to work together and have those conversations and be proactive. And that should not be something we find out in the midst of a contract being signed. That's also something that should be done methodically and strategically and, um, allowing time for both entities to ensure that we're planning so that we have the appropriate supports in place. So, um, you cheated, I cheated, one of us cheated, we both get a. I cheated, one of us cheated. We both get a hundred on that test, but. But we did that, we had very similar um comments down. So I. There are very real and legitimate issues and I want Clark County to be responsive to that and be respectful. Of the needs of our students and the feelings of our students. And I want us to do that in a, in an appropriate way. Mr. Davis.
Yes, um, Dr. Thomas, I agree with you in terms of getting, getting feedback. And I think that the, that the county is in. They're, they're doing their, with their next year budget, just like, you know. Your staff is beginning to do next year's budget. So, so how, what this spells in terms of this particular contract, I don't know. Uh, you know, obviously, I do know that can, that there, there are commissioners that are concerned about spending money in this direction. I do wanna, I do wanna point out something is that we're really not, in my opinion, we're not talking about the individuals. We're talking about, there are, there are school boards that have uh maintained their, their SROs. But have simply unarmed them. So, you know, I think we, we, you know, and, and I, I think Chief Sizemore did a great job in terms of. Laying out with the structure of, of, of how folks are being used, but we've got. We got unarmed and we've got armed. And I guess my question is. Can the, can the, can the, and, and these, and we have a great staff of, of SROs. So is that great staff? Is that dependent on uh some of them? Having a, a pistol on their person? Um, is that what, is that what builds their, their, their um relationship building skills or, or is it? Like with education teachers, is, is, is that relate, is that um wanting to, to relate? And developing a skill set to work with young people. So to me, as we do this survey that you're talking about and reaching out, I think we need to look at. Not to, not that we need to do away with SROs, but, but do they need to be armed? To do their job effectively? I guess I, I'm interested in, in Chief Sizemore's response.
Well, you know, I, I mentioned some of this on the way through. I've been a police officer thirty-four years. I've never had to use my firearm. Uh, I have mentioned cases where we've recovered firearms in the school. You're aware of incidents across the nation where there have been school shootings. Uh, thankfully, we haven't had anything like that happen in our community. And thankfully, there haven't been that many occasions that police officers uh. Had to even draw a firearm on a campus. However. If you want those children to be protected as much as possible. I think that the officers, there needs to be armed police officers. It takes, it's too long to call necessarily and get somebody on the site. My own son went to Bernie Harris lines and uh was out on the playground one day when a man walked up on the campus with a machete. And uh he was disoriented and, and having some type of problem. And uh fortunately, you know, the officer, he was able to deescalate it. Unfortunately, nothing bad happened, but there are bad things that happen. And if. You don't have someone there trained uh to handle it and equipped. Um, you know, you, you are sacrificing some, some safety.
And I just wanna say, I, I, you know, I, I'm listening to this conversation and I, I hear it and see it from multiple sides and. If, you know, the, this, I'm not sure where we're gonna go in our decision-making with um not having weapons or not having SRO cops, but. I did have an opportunity to interview a district who. And in my opinion, um slightly um just removed SROs very quickly. Um as this movement is trending across the um. Our nation and um. You know, they said they've had incidents in their school district where the response time was seriously like slow, where they needed someone. To be there and then their mandated reporting processes kind of failed because they didn't put things in place to. Replace what the police officers were doing. Um, another piece is what we find is in elementary school, there is a lot of custody issues. For which our SROs help us tremendously uh with as one of recent, uh right before Christmas. And so, you know, I, I think we just need to think about what the role is of SRO cops in schools. I will say that here. I find it to be very unique in terms of the selection criteria. You don't find that sometimes. The selection criteria is not that a person should have a um. A background in working with students or children or have a passion for that, that, that I think is an extra um. Kind of like um Dr. Gant was saying earlier, like an outlier. And so that's something that I think should be um a little bit considered here. Um. I'm not, you know, sure where we go, but it's just something to think about.
My recommendation would be, and I'm, I'm reading the comments in the chat and I agree. And we started this conversation um a little earlier. Kind of in the midst of a lot of other transitions. Um but I think that this is definitely. Something we need to look at. We need to explore. We need to um take advantage of research and, and. Other districts uh experiences and what has happened. Take time to get the feedback that we need to get. I would recommend that um we would move forward. I've taken a lot of notes. This evening and have heard some excellent feedback, ideas and suggestions. I would suggest, Dr. Gant, that we move forward in, in our agenda. And when we get to the point of the vote, we will. See where we are with that. Uh, but it would be my suggestion that we. Either this becomes a committee um or, okay, Ms. Gallagher had a comment, that this becomes a committee. Or that we as a group work to get information based on. The feedback we received tonight and any additional information that the board would like for us to obtain. Data and information on and be in a position. In the fall to make a recommendation of what we do at this point. In twenty twenty-two rather than trying to change our model right when the MOU is due. This uh is something that warrants our attention. And um is not something that we can deny the realities of. We can't deny the historical implications. Of this as Dr. Gant shared. And it's, you know, it's very valuable discussion and um deserves our attention. And I think we need to just commit to having a team that looks at that. I can work with Mr. Fisher and charge them to have a work team. That can begin researching this, researching other options. And we could even do like a quarterly update on where are we, what have we found out? Come back in three months, have an update, come back in six months. Let's have another update. Nine months from now, we should be able to make a recommendation. So that we're not in a position of having to make a hasty decision. That would be my recommendation after I hear from Ms. Gallagher.
I was, uh, well, you just covered it. I was. Um, like having some data uh and not just, you know, like from surveys, but um data that looks like, like the impact. So what impact does this have on school and then do an assessment of, you know, like what it looks like long-term or short-term? Uh, having the SRO versus, you know, having an unarmed SRO. Um, and seeing what that, um, and then having a community impact, not just from. Parents and students, but from regular old people who just live in the neighborhood. Um, and see what that engagement looks like because I've seen uh all the SROs out in the community. Um, definitely being um a, a, a really good model for what community, what we think that are. Kind of what people talk about community policing needs to look like. Um, and I think that in Clark, at least in Clark County School District, we are in a unique position to say, okay, so we. Um, have an idea of what community policing looks like. Here are some of the um skills that our, our officers have. Um, that don't just benefit our students while they're in school, but also while they're in the community. Um. I, I think we should definitely capitalize on the resources that we currently have and the positive relationship that we have established with. Uh, individuals who carry guns. Um, and I, I'm really big on not, while I recognize that there's a national move for something. I don't think that in, in Clark County, while we, we talk a lot about how we're unique and. We got flagship university and all the stuff that we do differently. We started off, I mean, the, the bright from, not bright from the start, the um head start, early head start, like we, we. Set the stage for a lot of other places. Why not just tweak our, um, what we have, our, our relationship with the. Police Department or officers and make that something that everybody else in the nation looks at. Uh, instead of following a trend, we can be the trendsetter. I guess that's what I want to say.
And Dr. Thomas, let me just add, right before I started with um CCSD, um, our assessment was done. I'm, I'm about to go back and pull that assessment and we looked at um public safety um. On our campus and for our school district. So I'll pull that and some of those things that we had. That's what we put forward that we're using now. So I'll pull some of that information also and maybe we can share that with the board and. That would be helpful moving forward.
And we will work to add those incident reports and to provide those updates to the board as suggested by Dr. Anderson. There are no other questions or comments for me. Thank you. And I believe. This concludes um my report. I've typed so many notes on my personal agenda. I've lost where I am. Um, this is.
I'm taking notes too, so I think we can compare between the two of us.
Yes, so there have been great conversations, not just around this, but also around um several other things that we've talked about tonight. So I um have notes for that. That will conclude um my presentation for this time, Dr. Gant. We do have. Ms. Veronica Jackson available once we get to the attorney contract portion of our agenda.
Okay, all right. Thank you, um, Dr. Thomas and um Cabinet and Board colleagues as well for, for that information and that discussion. Um, we'll move forward with item number seven and this is our financial reports. Dr. Thomas, Dr. Schuerman.
Yes, at this time, um I will ask Mr. Schuerman to rip, um to present our report for financials for the month of November.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Um, good evening, Board members. Um, I enjoyed the discussion uh regarding. Committees, um just kind of keeps me on track of uh how deep we need to go into these financials because we do spend. About an hour going into them pretty deep, um, you know, during our finance committee meetings that we have each month. So for the new board members, I'll just give a, a quick uh overview of these financials that I present each month. The first page that you'll see is gonna be a summary um and kind of hit the highlights and uh. I just, the stuff that's good, I'll, I'll try to highlight in green, the stuff that you need to uh, you know, we'll need to track and be aware of. Um, anything bad, I'll put in red. Um, so I, I've done that in this first initial report that we have here. Uh, we have a total of four reports. We've got a cash and fund balance. So this is our balance sheet report. It's the first one that we'll look at. Uh, we also have a statement of revenues um that we look at and also a statement of expenditures. And then finally, the last report that uh I, I share with the board is a cash flow projection, which looks at our actual revenues and expenditures and then kind of tax on. Oh, what we anticipate throughout the, the rest of the year. To see um, you know, be kind of a, a financial weather vane of, of whether or not we're, we're doing well or. Uh, we need to be a little bit more conservative with our spending. Uh, so looking at our, our overview here, our cash and fund balance. Uh, we're continuing to track above FY twenty. So the amount of money that we have in the bank. Compared to last year, it's still above where we were at. And that's because we started out with about four and a half million dollars more than we did. Um, at the same timeframe last year. Our revenues as of the end of November. We are slightly ahead of where we were at, at the same point last year. We're at sixty-two point set zero seven percent of. Um, collecting all of our budgeted revenues compared to sixty point five percent. So that's good. Um, one, a couple of things that we need to keep an eye on as the year progresses with our revenues are both our, our QBE, which is the money that we get from the state. I'll, I'll kind of explain a little bit further uh why we need to keep an eye on that as well as our property taxes. Other, at November, they were slightly behind where we were the prior year. But I've actually tracked ahead one month since December is now done and we're right on track. So really, um, if I change this report, I, I'd say. Right now, property taxes are looking good. Um expenditures, just a general overview, uh, we're still on track to, to spend less than our approved FY twenty-one budget. And you'll see this especially when we get down to our cash flow projection. Uh, and that, that final report, the projected change in fund balance, so the amount of money that we're going to uh go down in our bank account. Is projected at about four point two million dollars. And while that sounds bad. Uh, just keep in mind that what's budgeted for this year is about a loss of uh five point five million. So we're actually trending a little bit better than, than what was, what was budgeted for the year. Here's our first report. It's the balance sheet. The big things that we're looking at are. Cash and our unassigned fund balance. And we track that in two graphs down here below. And as you can see, the yellow line, which is our FY twenty-one, it's above uh the blue line, which is our FY twenty. Um, for both cash as well as our fund balance, our cash and fund balance are above where we were at. The prior year by roughly three and a half million dollars. Uh, one thing to note, um, I did mention that. We have budgeted more expenditures than revenues in the, the current fiscal year. So although we are above the blue line, um, I do anticipate both our cash and our fund balance to dip below this blue line. Um, as the year progresses. And just to, to keep in mind, uh, kind of a benchmark of safety is this green line here. This uh represents fifteen percent of our budgeted expenditures. And so even though I do predict this yellow line is gonna dip below the blue line. I don't believe it's gonna ever fall below that benchmark of security, that green uh, that green fifteen percent level. Our statement of revenues, um, like I had mentioned, we're slightly um surpassed or. Uh, we're, we're doing slightly better than, than how much we had collected uh prior year. At this point, November of, of FY twenty, we're sitting at sixty point five percent compared to sixty-two point oh seven percent. So that's a good sign. And our statement of expenditures, we're slightly spending more money than we had um at, at this point. Compared to our budget um for FY twenty. So it, it's a, it's a very slight point seven percent ahead. Uh, overall, uh, when I get to the next report, there are a few areas that are demonstrating quite a bit of savings and a couple of areas that. Um, I do anticipate to overspend in. And here's our final report. It's the cash flow projection. The yellow highlighted columns, these are all uh actual revenues and actual expenditures. And then we combine this report with what's projected or anticipated throughout the rest of the year. We compare that to our budget and see what the difference is. And so for our revenues. Uh, I had mentioned as of November, um, property taxes. We're looking like they may not hit the mark of what was budgeted. So you see uh this five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, that, that's actually uh. It was looking like in November that we were gonna collect a little bit less, about five hundred thousand dollars less than what was budgeted. Same is true with our QBE. Um, and this is just to, to a drop in enrollment. And, you know, our enrollment, our FTE directly drives the amount of QBE funding that we get from the state. So I just anticipate uh specifically right here um. A drop in our QBE revenue because of that uh FTE drop. So. It's possible that we might not collect a, a full amount of uh QBE that was budgeted. Um, I'm less concerned at this point about our property taxes. I, I do feel, especially because I said it. I fast forwarded to the end of December because we're now done with that and we are right on track with where we are at in FY twenty and FY. And FY twenty, we collected more property taxes than we budgeted. So I think we're in a safe place with property taxes. Uh we just have to keep an eye on this uh this QBE number as the year progresses. For our expenditures, you see, we've got quite a bit of savings here in our instruction line item. And that's not necessarily due to salaries and benefits, since we are paying all of our salaries and benefits. It's it's uh it's more along the sa- the the lines of uh all of your other operational cost savings that we've had um throughout the year. On the flip side, our general admin looks like it might go over, as well as school admin, but we'll have quite a bit of savings, it looks like. Um anticipated in maintenance and operations of plant services. Overall, though, um we're trending positive in our expenditures. By positive, I mean it looks like we're not going to spend the full amount of our budget. We're we're trending, spending less than our budget, so about two million dollars less. So uh even though we're looking at not collecting all of our anticipated revenues, doesn't look like we're going to spend all of our authorized expenditure or our authorized budget. So this little graph down here, uh the blue line is tracking our approved budget for the year. Uh and the yellow line is tracking what we're actually anticipating on um either adding or decreasing from our bottom line. And so you can see this yellow line is actually deviating a little bit from uh what the budget is and it's going up, which is a good sign. So uh right now, we're looking at um decreasing our fund balance by about four point two million dollars. If everything kind of holds throughout the rest of the year, and we're not even halfway throughout the year. So just keep that in mind. Um this report will be a little bit more important and will become increasingly more important as the year progresses. So uh that wraps up my financial report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Uh Dr. You said that property taxes are going to be a little bit less this time?
I don't know if you recall, but uh when we were in our property tax, uh or not our pro- excuse me, when we were in our um finance committee, I had contacted the tax commissioner just to kind of get a a feel for uh whether or not she saw any trends, you know, collecting less than anticipated. And she said, oh, we're right on track to collect exactly what uh is budgeted. She pulled her year-to-date revenues through uh November for when when we spoke. She said, any differences that you see are just going to be due to uh the timing of when we get you the check. So she was confident that uh we'll hit the budget amount for property taxes. And she was right. I did look through the end of the December and we're right on track in terms of uh percentage-wise, what we collected in FY twenty. And i- if you remember, in FY twenty, we collected more property taxes than we budgeted. So I I feel like we're in a good position with property taxes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I I made a note and I know that it makes sense to me. So, okay, great. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And Dr. Thomas, that's all I've got. Thank you. Uh Dr. Yeager, it looks like you've got a question?
I just had a quick question. Can you remind me how we budgeted for the new board offices in the current budget? Did we?
So uh let me share my screen again just a moment. Taking a while to catch up. Pass it again. I'm sorry. This is going really slow. I apologize. These are revenues, and I'm trying to get down to our expenditures. Here we go. So uh the way that the the new um property is being paid for currently, we are, this other outlays here. We moved the full amount that was in our property fund in in our fund uh one oh one. And I think it was around two point eight million dollars. About two point eight million dollars of this three point six million dollars makes up that transfer out the capital project account. Um and that's going to be our general fund contribution to purchase this property. And so the other portion, um because it's going to cost more than that uh to to either purchase this or to do a lease purchase as we had planned in the past. But the general fund contribution, the amount that we budget, the amount that you look at, is going to be made up in this other outlays right here. And it that transaction is already taking place. So I've already moved the money out and it's reflected in our current budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I can, can I ask two questions? And I I'm of the school that there's no such question as a dumb question, but I really to operate from a very elementary perspective here. Is this, so is the budget similar to what we see like at UGA, for example, where if you don't spend everything that you've allotted for that year, by the end of that year, the following year, you're potentially working with less?
So uh UGA, they they operate on a little bit different um financial rules and accounting rules than we do. And and I wouldn't necessarily say it's a, if if you don't spend all of your budget the next year, you're not going to get allocated the same amount. Are, we've got a little bit more flexibility in how we budget. Um it's possible that one year you may not spend your full budget. But next year, you can build your budget from ground up and anticipate even more expenditures than you had budgeted the previous year. So so really, we just uh do a a zero-based budgeting um from ground zero. And we we do look at the expenditures in in prior years, but we're not going to necessarily say, hey, you didn't spend this full amount, we're taking it away from you since uh you didn't spend it. It it's more of what do you anticipate spending? Let's prioritize that. Let's look at our strategic plan and make sure everything's aligned. Um and then make that decision. So we're not, I from I I I do have some experience with UGA. I'm not as uh, you know, fully adept with with how they operate. But I feel like we've got more flexibility in how we budget and operate than you than they do.
Okay, that's good to know. My my second question um was sort of related to that because I was I was thinking along those same lines. So now I need to sort of erase my brain and not think that way. But with this money that's just kind of going to be potentially sitting there, not having been spent, is there a smart, smarter way to utilize that that balance that's left over potentially at the end of the year? For example, are there smart things that we could do to sort of offset some of the the stressors that have been happening due to COVID, to families and and teachers? Are there things that we could do with with that that balance that would still put us in a good financial position, but would also allow us to do more positive things and make more positive impacts in the community, given what we're experiencing right now?
For sure. And that that's that's stuff that we analyze every day. You know, we we discuss needs um and look at what type of available budget there are uh to fill those needs. And I pulled up our uh our balance sheet to kind of show you um, you know, how we do track that. And and so this green line, um it represents fifteen percent of our, I believe it's fifteen percent, fifteen percent reserve. Um so that's kind of just a a a benchmark threshold that we've set as a district to say, hey, this is a safe place that we don't want to go below. So I would say um each year, if we did uh add to the fund balance and there was room between where we end up or where we uh, you know, dip below the 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 focus point that we go, if there is room between that green line and where we go, we do have some additional resources uh that that we could use and spend other ways. Uh just keep in mind that this is going to fluctuate from year to year. And what was budgeted this year was to actually decrease our fund balance by about five point five million dollars. So a lot of that uh reserve that you're talking about, looking at, and how can we spend it differently, it's being done. Last year, we added quite a bit of money um to our fund balance, just due to the savings in the second half of the year. But we're using all this year because of uh QBE reductions that we're getting from the state. We're having to make up for that um, A, with property taxes and B, using what money we already have in the bank to kind of make ends meet and and have a balanced budget. So we are using um, in in my opinion, we're we're using our our fund balance and available resources wisely.
Thank you.
I I have a question. Um so what happens to the COVID money?
Are you are you talking about the the CARES Act? Money that we've received? So that that's kind of treated like a a federal program. And so we have a completely separate budget for for the the CARES Act money. And you're looking at, this is representative of our general fund. So it's our fund one hundred. And it really uh, the only way that CARES impacts what you're looking at is that way our budget was set up for FY twenty-one, instead of expenditures taking place in our general fund, we're shifting those out uh to CARES. And so you you actually don't see those expenditures show up in our in our statement of expenditures, because instead of budgeted in the general fund this year, they are budgeted using CARES funds. And so there was quite a bit of 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 money that was allotted from our 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 CARES allotment to supplement um our general fund expenditures. And I think the 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 terminology is continuity of staff and services. So it used uh quite a bit of CARES money to kind of fill in the gaps of our um our budget hole that was left by the 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 QBE allotment reduction. If you look up here at our statement of revenues, the allotment reduction, seven point three million dollars. It's withholding from us this year um because they did, they uh let me coming in. And so they were very conservative and said, hey, we're going to cut everyone's um allocations by roughly ten percent. So that's what we've had to deal with as a board. Uh we're we're receiving seven point three million dollars less from the state than we earn. And so we've got to find ways to make up that seven point three million dollars. And we've done that by A, uh using our our fund balance, our reserves that we're talking about. We've had increased property taxes. Luckily, not increased property tax, but our 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 property tax uh digest has grown. And and as a result, our property tax revenues have also grown. And then also, we used some CARES money to uh fill in that those holes as well.
But that money's not included on there?
It's not. It it's it's budget, it has its com- a completely separate budget. And and really what it is, is we're we're, the amount that we're using to supplement the general fund expenditures, we've taken those general fund expenditures and are reporting them under CARES instead of in our general fund, which is what you're looking at right now. They're they're in a completely separate budget.
So like the QBE, the the one that you mentioned, also on the on the CARES Act budget? To fill in the gaps?
Can you ask your question one more time?
So where where the CARES Act funds filled in the gaps, are they on this one and that one or just on that one?
Uh you won't see, I could pull up uh um or share with you um our general fund uh budget presentation. And it will break down kind of at a higher level than what you're looking at. Uh the CARES Act is supplementing our our general fund.
Is that one online?
It is, and it it if
Okay, I'll look it up. When I'm like, and I'll call you because it's already on.
Sure, sounds good. As long as there's no more questions, I think that's all.
Dr. Gant, that concludes our financial report.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Schuerman. We will move forward with number eight, and these are our policies to be adopted, rescinded or revised. And um I think they've been all packaged together. Um, Dr. Yeager?
Yeah, so these are policies I presented to you last meeting, um and they went up for public comment. And I don't believe we've had any public comment, at least last time I checked. So they're pretty much ready to go unless there are questions. Um I know at least one board member voted against moving these uh forward last last month. So I'm happy to address any questions. Otherwise, I think we're ready to just uh vote them in.
I don't see any hands. Going back through my
This was the tail end of the L and M. Well, actually, it was all the Ls and Ms. Which we worked through. We removed the one L policy that was mentioned earlier to to keep it out of this particular pot. Um so we could spend more time with it. Most of these were pretty much um no big deals. Many of the policies in L um were well stated in the revised K policies that we worked on earlier in the summer. So and again, no public comments on any of these.
Well, if there are no questions or additional comments, we will move forward with personnel. Um item number nine, this personnel, nine one and nine two. Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. It is my recommendation that items number one, nine point one and nine point two and nine point two is the one that Ms. Duke spoke to us about earlier regarding um response to leave related to COVID absences. And um is my recommendation that both of those items be placed on the list for voting next week.
Thank you. Are are there any questions or additional discussion for Dr. Thomas about any of these items?
Really like that solution to be able to try and extend those benefits. Um I think that'll be very helpful and keeping ours, I guess, our staff a little bit more stable. So thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I I'm delighted, but sorry to see Ms. Duke is still here. Um can you update us on the status of the HR search? Is this appropriate time to do that? If not, you can just email me.
Yes, ma'am. We
Fire, she changed her mind, right?
She's coming back. No, we are finishing interviews this week and um hope to have information for you, actually ideally by the end of the day tomorrow. I hope to be able to um share some information in your Friday board update. And um depending on the candidate that's chosen and their need to communicate with their um current employer, that will determine when we're able to bring that to vote. Ideally, we would make a um amendment to next week's agenda if possible. You know, we would love to have some time where there's overlap with Mrs. Duke and um her replacement. But so I will be able to have information on that position, as well as the executive director. Um I can give you an update on that position that was held by Mr. Michael Harris. So by tomorrow at four o'clock, you all should have an update.
Great, thank you so much.
You're very
Nice to see you, Ms. Duke.
So glad to still have her here.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, why do we vote on this?
Okay, Ms. Duke, were you going to answer that?
I was going to ask which one she was asking about. Um it is
Any of it.
The board's job to approve all um hires and resignations.
Oh, so we approve it but don't have any say so?
Yes, ma'am. I can, Mr. Pruitt can might can answer that better than I can.
Yes, state statute requires that all um hires be approved by um by the board. Um, all personnel actions be approved by the board, but um. Uh, in your board member code of ethics, which you'll hear a lot about when you get your new board member training. Uh, it it talks about not micromanaging the superintendent and and giving her adequate room to make those decisions or recommendations to you.
Okay, and are there exit interviews? Oh, I think mommy just put the same thing.
I was typing my reply. Yes, we do exit interviews, and that's part of the um report we present. Uh, to the board in the fall after we get through the summer hire of people. That's where most of our turnover is. And um, we do send out exit interviews.
So with the information and data collected from exit interviews, what's done with it? Are we making adjustments? So that we're not losing people because they say vacated?
Yeah, it's a bigger, it's a bigger discussion probably to, you know, be able to answer that and look at and at the responses to that. There are times when we see um, you know, maybe the same type of answer coming from a certain building. And we get the principal supervisors to work with that principal to address maybe to see if there's an issue. Um, but, you know, it just depends.
So, sorry, just for a little clarity, you're saying that the exit interviews only happen? In the fall when staff from are leaving?
No, we we start, so when we get um. You know, most of our staff, the people that y'all are interested in exit interviews are usually from our largest employee group, which is teachers. And so we send those out to the teachers as they start to leave um at the end of the school year. And so we collect all that data over the summer and then I present it to you guys in the fall.
What about staff that? Leave in other times of the year? Do they not get exit interviews?
Right now, we're only doing exit interviews with uh teachers and they, so any teacher that is left throughout that year, when we we kick them off in May, um, they will get it.
Okay.
It's it's just a labor.
Administrators don't get exit interviews? At all?
I mean, we could do it. We could add it. We started doing that, I think, last year, maybe the year before. I think this is, this would be the third year this year. Um, and we just haven't added additional employees yet, but you can talk to my predecessor about adding the rest of them.
Excellent idea. I've now added that notes.
I mean, they're pretty essential to just kind of understanding, especially at the administrative level, some. Operational things that you may want to adjust or improve or. That are going well. So I mean, I feel like that's a really important piece of data you'd be missing if you're not interviewing administrators as well as teachers.
Yes. I have added that here.
And Paris, because we always have a shortage of those and bus drivers to figure out why they're not staying so that we can make a proper adjustment. So that we can keep people, because if we're always having a shortage, we won't be able to fill any gaps.
And that's actually a part of our strategic plan. This will make uh Ms. Davis happy and uh. That aligns specifically with our strategic plan. Uh, the HR priority in terms of recruiting, um, developing and retaining staff. And so one of the ways that we're able to better retain is to understand why we're losing people. So adding that component aligns perfectly with our strategic plan.
Yeah, and that could be, um, I think that's a good reminder to let the work that we do should be guided by our strategic plan. Um, and just, you know, as, you know, as we consider these things, consider them in the view of the strategic plan, because that is really uh an awesome opportunity. Um, for like collaboration and it just sort of sets the tone for the um. For the district, um, and really is what basically should drive the district's work, but then also um the things that we inquire out as well. Other questions? All right, so Dr. Thomas, does that, you cover nine, one and nine, two?
Yes, nine, four, one and two, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, all right, so we'll move forward with item number ten. Um, and this is our consent agenda. And so with each of these, I'll just sort of say them. And if if at least one person wants to pull it off, we'll pull it off of the consent agenda, or if there are any follow-up questions that we can go ahead and get answered now. Um, well, if there are some questions, ideally, they would have, um, you know, if we had questions, it's good to reach out before now, but certainly. Um, additional questions may come up. Um, ten point one is our action to approve the December board minutes.
Dr. Gant, can I um, I just wanted to make sure that the new board members knew. What the consent agenda meant and what we were doing right now, because I remember in my first meeting that I didn't know what was happening. So just wanted to clarify for them.
Thank you, Dr. Dykman. Want to explain a little bit further?
Oh, I thought you could.
Oh, no, you.
Um, so the consent agenda is um a list of items that we will vote on for next week. And um ideally, we take them as a group and then just vote on the consent agenda. So we go through them at the work session, and if people say, yes, leave it on consent, that means that um there. They feel fine voting on it next week without further clarification, or they can vote it on it as part of the package. If there are any items that people have additional questions on or feel like they might want to vote in a different way on that item versus the other items. You can pull any item off the consent agenda, and then that item will be voted on separately at the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Dykman. All right, so we'll go to item ten, one, and these are our board meeting minutes. Consent?
So can, if I consent, I have not gone through with a fine-tooth comb all the policies that are listed. I'm sorry, I meant to do that and I ran out of time. Um, but if I go through them and there's a mistake, I can do that next week, right? I can fix that next week.
Are you talking about, you're talking about under your policies, um?
Yeah, so the minutes for from last time contain forty-five policies, and I'm sorry, I haven't gone through those to double check to make sure they're accurate. So I guess um. I put it on the consent agenda, and then if there's a problem, I will try to pull it off, if that's okay. Okay.
Yeah, that would be my understanding, Ms. Okay, I was gonna say.
They're probably fine. I just haven't double checked them.
Okay, I think you will pull it off just before we start, uh, but I don't.
Okay.
Mr. Pruitt, if you can. I can't hear you, Mr. Pruitt.
I am muted, sorry. Uh, yes, that's correct. Anything can be pulled off before you approve the agenda at the start of next week's meeting if you need to.
Okay, and I can make a, any amendments to the to the minutes at that time as well, right?
That's right. Uh, so you pull it off, and then when they, when it comes up individually, you'd make a motion to approve the minutes with the following corrections.
Okay, thank you. I just needed that little bit of giving of wiggle room. Thanks. Apologies.
Thank you, Dr. Yeager and Mr. Pruitt. Item ten, two. Um, this is our action to approve legal services.
Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
I do have a question. Can I ask my question now?
Yes, Ms. Is that Ms. Davis?
Yes, I'm curious about the um. I guess as our new board, once once we leave our retreat, maybe this can also be a part of our discussion in terms of support or legal services. For the board, uh, well, for the district. And maybe just have a little discussion about that to see if we are actually uh. Correctly engaging, over-engaging, or how we're doing and engaging our attorney. I I would like some feedback on that in terms of um, yeah, just how we're doing.
And we also have Ms. Jackson here, um, related to that item, um, not how we use, but. How we develop the contract. So if you all have questions, or Dr. Gant, if you would just like for her to give a very brief overview. Of um the timeline on that contract, she's available now to do so.
You know, honestly, with the new board members coming on board, it might be a worthwhile discussion for uh maybe Mike at some point to consider. Sharing with us, you know, some of our results in terms of the kinds of things that you're addressing, because that's how I got to know what our attorneys did for us. Through some reports that we give them periodically.
Okay. Um, Dr. Gant, would you like Ms. Jackson just to give a brief overview of why the contract is written like it is?
Yeah, I think that that would be helpful. I also agree with Ms. Davis. At some point, I guess the board, you know, might be able to decide. I do think it'll be useful, you know, for the board to have a a full understanding of the types of services. Um, I know it's hard to believe that Mr. Pruitt works with other people besides us. It answers all of our questions, but. Um, I think it's probably a range of different things that could be helpful for us to know. Um, yes, if Ms. Jackson can give us a a brief overview, I think that would be great.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Um, Madam President, Dr. Thomas, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, great. Um, this contract is actually one of our professional services contract. Um, we we do have several uh service contracts, which include HVAC services. Um, we do um ground maintenance, so we have other service contracts as well. This contract was written in a term of three years, and I th- I think that that kind of stops all those people. But you have to remember that when it comes to contracts, um, and when it comes to multi-year contracts, especially for a board of education. They are not allowed to enter into true uh multi-year contract. Um, because they have to be allowed to, you have to be able to counsel those contracts, and that comes from the Georgia Constitution. But the Georgia General Assembly, what they do, they they have provided authority that we could do. As far as we, school districts can do multi-year agreements, but only if we have explicit language in that contract. And that language you will see in under uh background, once you look at that recommendation. And with that, that language, it stays within the constitutional bounds. Um, which the Georgia consti- the Georgia Constitution has already established. So that's why you see that OCGA twenty dash two dash five oh six, because it gives us the right. To terminate a contract at the end of any contract period. As a matter of fact, we have terms in our contract that we can also um, you know, end those contracts due to termination. That's why it's very important too for service contracts, so you can have a metrics and you can also do some type of performance assessment. Of those contracts as well, knowing that you do have, you know, you do have that right to end that contract. Or the district can take a po- that positive action, and they can renew it or they not to renew it. One thing you have to keep in mind when you do contracts is that. All of our contracts are under the DJE, and that's our policy dash R. So those, if you see any contracts over eighty thousand dollars, just know that those contracts have to come to the board to be approved. And so that's one thing to take into consideration going forward. So you may see some contracts that you may see one time. And that's because the aggregate cost, that total cost is is um maybe over eighty, but it's not annually over eighty thousand dollars. So it's just some different variables in here, and I'll be happy to talk to the new board members if I need to have any further discussions on that.
Yeah, but and and Madam President, if I could just sort of chime in, that's a good explanation by Ms. Jackson and. And just a- as Ms. Jackson said, on most of your kinds of contracts, you can only go beyond one year if you have this right to terminate at the end of each year. Uh, with lawyers, because our bar rules, our rules of professional conduct say we can't bind you at all. You can fire your lawyer anytime you want to. So it's not just at the end of the year for us, it's anytime, and that's just because of the nature of our profession. So what this does, I mean, it binds me and my firm uh to to the rights and the things that we've represented to you in the proposal, but it doesn't bind you.
Right. I noticed in the proposal that there were um. There were some, I I guess, documents that had um. Basically, you were comparing two firms, and I guess it was a blind comparison with some reviewers to sort of rate. Two different firms. Was this a part of the con- uh of the contractual process that happens?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, anytime we do RFPs, um, if there is a criteria that sets, that is set forth in the RFP, meaning some type of matrix. Then you will have evaluation team. On this particular contract, we had our human resources, the investigator. We also had our Director of Special Education and Behavioral Support, and we also had our Chief Financial Officer. So they were or considered the evaluation team. Once you see that document, that document shows the two proposals that we received. Of course, we are uh recommending that this be awarded to Hall Boo Smith, but there was an additional firm. That also submitted a proposal, and so that is a comparison as far as the criteria. Um, that I also added into tho- that document so that you could see how the evaluation uh unfolded between the two firms.
And one thing that's that may be uh worth mentioning here or elsewhere is that at some point, um, I know Dr. Maddox has um. You know, brought this up, and I've been diligent about. Um, us keeping this at the forefront, and that is our disparities um study and sort of like, just in the grand scheme of things. Um, looking at our RFPs and looking at um the degree to which. Uh, either small businesses or minority businesses are engaged. And so that is something you may hear about in the future as as well. That is, um, although it's not directly related to this process that just occurred. It is related to just the RFP process and and, you know, start doing business with the district and those goods and services as well.
Absolutely, and that's a great point that you brought up, Dr. Gant, because I was actually in the process. Of uh reaching out, and I think Dr. Thomas has already stated this, reaching out to Athens, Clark County. And also I wanted to reach out to the University of Georgia to see have they done a a study of that kind as well. So maybe we could gather some information that can help us in our um study also. So uh, thank you for bringing that. Um, but one thing we do um have to remember is that um. In our matrix, one of the things even the board um have our always wanted us to do is that local preference. So as you can see, one of the evaluation criterias was local pres- preference and also added value as well. So those are included in that also.
Um, I have a question. So, um. So it says um, a three-year contract, and I was trying to listen earlier, but I don't speak. Um, so is this the first time this is a three-year contract, or has a three-year contract always been done?
Well, it would be the first time for legal services. I had an opportunity back in twenty nineteen. Um, the board actually saw, um, I think, um, in the previous administration. Um, there was a resolution brought forth about a charter. Um, of course, that's a an another subject. But uh, it never got to any of our Georgia. Of course, that's another subject, but it never got to any of our Georgia House officials to actually get approved. And so I had an opportunity to go back and look at the actual charter. The actual charter does not state anything about multi-year. The only thing the charter states is that professional services would have to be brought forth to be approved annually if they're over that threshold. And then the only thing within that charter, it did state $10,000, which was our previous allotted amount that we could not exceed. But now it's over $80,000. And so, yes, and, and we have other service contracts that we do bring to the board, but yes, this will be the first time the legal services would be brought forth as a a multi-year contract.
So does that mean that we only look at it every three years, or do we still review it annually?
You will still review it annually.
Okay.
And you will review this one anyway, because it's over the $80,000 threshold. Just looking in comparison to the last three years, it was well over $200,000 for this expense. So you would definitely see this in the years to come. Only thing this does is put some stability as far as the firm, and it also keeps us from doing any type of redundant RFPs every year.
Thank you. That's what I remember about the three-year contracts. So, yeah, it keeps the RFP process down from every year. But everything else stays the same.
That is correct, Ms. Davis.
All right, so I know there's
I'm happy to answer anything else, just ask away.
Thank you for the awesome job you do.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I really appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so are we keeping this on consent or not? Or are there any additional questions? I would suggest that actually if there are additional questions, then we need to pull it off of consent. If not, then we should leave it on and move forward.
Consent.
I still say consent.
Consent.
All right. I think I've heard from, or I haven't heard anyone say pull it off, okay? So we'll move forward with 10-4, which is our action to approve the intent.
It's 10-3.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that, Mr. Davis. 10-3, the action to renew School Resource Officer MOU, consent or remove?
Non-consent.
All right, so we'll go ahead and pull that off. If there are any additional follow-up questions about the MOU for, from any board members, I am going to encourage you to send those questions to Dr. Thomas and the board if you, you know, feel that the information will be useful in an effort to use our time efficiently next week. And so again, if there are any questions and additional concerns, please be sure to follow up with Dr. Thomas and team, and even the board if necessary. Okay, so we pulled that one off of consent. Um, item 10-4, our action to, okay, our action to approve our kindergarten intent to apply for kindergarten summer grant.
Consent.
Can we ask questions?
Sure, sure. And if, if there are several, several questions, what we can do is pull it off of consent, Ms. Gallagher. And that way we can, you know, there may be information, there may be information that's helpful for all of us. But certainly if you think there may be, you know, some questions that you can ask right now.
Go on. Uh, okay, so Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so with summer transit, summer transition, tired. Um, I know that parent engagement activities is a major component. If we will be virtual, how will y'all, how do y'all plan to fulfill that requirement?
So the summer transition program, this is actually the intent to apply. We would only actually implement if it were, if we were able to do so safely face-to-face. It would not be a virtual. But this year during the school year, we're using that parent and child together virtually with parents and/or through asynchronous activities that are sent home for parents and children to complete together. But you're correct, it's a major component, and so that summer program would only exist if it were able to be face-to-face.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sure, no problem. Great question.
Thank you very much. So we're leaving that on consent, looking at faces, all right. Okay, item, are we at item 10-5, which is our action to approve intent to apply for the kindergarten annual grant access?
Consent.
Consent.
Okay. Item 10-6, and this is the action to approve our annual Head Start, Early Head Start Program Governance Plan.
Consent.
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 Okay.
I love that program. I really do.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your support, all of you.
So well documented, it delights me.
Item 10-7, our action to approve a resolution to request a facility phase-out of Clark Middle.
I just had a quick question on this. This just, I read through it, and so this just means that because the plan will be to build a new facility, this is the first step that you have to do?
Yes, this is required.
Facility?
Yes, this is required by Georgia DOE as part of the building process. And also allows us to apply for capital outlay funding as well when we do the new construction.
I really think that's off of consent. Because I think that's a good discussion to have with the public, so that, again, they can see where we're going with that. But that would be my only reason for taking it off.
Is there, so we'll, so pull that off of consent. Are there any questions that could be had now? Or any, is there any information that could be shared with the public at this point? And I'm, I'm sort of balancing here, you know, communication and sharing as much information as possible with the public as well as the efficiency of our meetings next week.
So I'm not looking for a lot of discussion, but this is a major expenditure for the board, and I think it's important that we get it out there, that people understand where we're going. I think it's a big deal.
Well, this is the same process we did for Hillsman. And also, you know, it was brought up at the last board meeting. I think Dr. Yeager did an update from the COC minutes. We had the same information posted at that point. So it's been out there for probably 60 days or more, and it's been out there with the the school local building committee since, for the last three to four months.
So it's moving forward with the people that are in the loop on this?
Yes.
No, no question about that. It's the other people.
Well, so Linda, I did mention at the last board meeting about the survey and the responses to the survey and how it was unanimous or almost unanimous to have the school rebuilt rather than renovated. So that was presented at the last December board meeting, which was a public meeting.
Honestly, don't remember hearing that. I guess it's John that I will be kind of listening to for that, so I'm sorry if I missed.
It was at the COC report.
And again, it's the district that's actually doing the work, and so questions will be coming directly to John's office.
Well, it was the, it was the Community Oversight Committee where the discussion was presented to us about the survey results and about the decision that, that Mr. Galbraith and his team made. That was all part of the COC. It was a long, extensive, two-hour discussion of the COC in December.
So if I may interrupt, we can pull this from our consent agenda. And, and I would encourage any additional questions to be, you know, directed back to Dr. Thomas, Mr. Gilbert, the board, Dr. Yeager, if you, or Ms. Davis, if you feel that information would be helpful for the board to know. Certainly, again, before next week, just to balance our efficiency as a board. I do know new things can come up, you know, as we're having like organic conversations about things. But want to be sure that we're using, that we're informing the public, but then also using that time efficiently.
Just, just for the record, it was item 7.2 on the December 10th meeting. All the, all the documents were uploaded. The PDF of the executive summary and the local building committee report, it's all, there's three items uploaded on the agenda for the December 10th meeting under number 7.2.
Can I also add that I have seen community members talk about these plans? So I, I, they're, they're pretty public.
I'm just having that same experience. So I'm sorry, and it's okay.
So for right now, we'll pull it, well, not right now, we're going to pull it off of consent, because there is one person that wants it pulled up. You know, at least one person that wants it pulled off of consent. And as I mentioned earlier, with the things we pull off consent, reach out to Dr. Thomas and staff and the board as necessary.
Thank you.
You can just let us know if there are specific questions in addition to what's already, already been provided and shared. If there are additional questions that need to be answered, then I'll work with Mr. Gilbert to have responses for those.
Great. Okay, moving forward to item 10-8, I think we're at. And that's our action to approve the FY 2022 budget timeline.
I say consent, and I want to compliment Dr. Thomas, because this is the earliest that the board has had, that I remember, some type of discussion on the budget. So I, I applaud you.
Thank you, and I give all the credit to Mr. Schunnaman. Thank you. I wish I could accept it, but it's been
I will add too that in the Finance Committee meeting, we talked about it a little bit, and they would actually like to present some of that stuff earlier to us. But given everything that's happened this year, that, that didn't happen, so the next time it might even be earlier.
Yeah, well, the year before last, I think, that sounds very strange to say, I think we had a tentative outline actually that was sent to us for a budget calendar. And then, you know, the things happened, and then we moved into another year and things happened again, so hopefully this gets us part of the way, you know, part of the way there, so thank you.
Consent again.
All right, consent, consent. Okay, I don't hear anyone opposing and saying pull it off, so we'll keep that at consent. Um, all right, it is 10-24, and we are at item 11-1, which is adjournment. Yes, and Dr. Maddox, as Dr. Maddox mentioned, welcome to our board members. Dr. Maddox, we haven't heard from you tonight.
Yes, I'm actually starting to hear off listening. Find something different this year, how about that?
Need to take notes.
Just taking notes, starting off listening. I really enjoyed our new board members, and I'm, I'm excited.
Any questions? I know everybody wants to go. I do have a question. Um, so what, and this may just be my ignorance, so what exactly are these, this particular meeting for? And like, how are we currently using it? Because this is like a very, is the agenda always this thick? And, um, like, what are these meetings for? Because I had like some other things that have come up that I really like for us to be able to discuss at some point, so when do I share those?
So maybe if, maybe if the Veteran Board members or people who've been here longer than me, Ms. Davis and Mr. Davis, may want to chime in. But the agenda is set earlier by typically by myself, Dr. Thomas, and Dr. Maddox. We sort of go through. The agenda is linked to our strategic plan. And we are working on, you know, linking it even, even more. If there are particular like questions that you have, then reach out to Dr. Thomas. But if it's an issue that you feel like needs to be like actually on the agenda, our process about, our specific process with that is, I don't want to say lacking, but right now it's just a matter of the, the leadership team discussing those things. And part of the reason for that, Karina, is that, you know, there are a lot of wonderful things to discuss. But, you know, figuring out how does it link to the work that the district is supposed to be doing, and so that's always the balance. But I would encourage you to, like, when we get the agenda, or even before, we have the meeting for the agenda. If there are some things very specific, reach directly at Dr. Thomas, you know, and say, hey, this is something that, you know, would be great if we can discuss, then she brings it to myself and Dr. Maddox. And we do this, you know, we sort of do the same. This session is a work session, and so what that means is that we, this is the time really to discuss and ask questions. Ideally, we have the information even before tonight. And so this is not the only time to discuss and ask questions. That means that the, leading up to this meeting, discussion should have been had, and so that's always a balance, right? Because when we get in public meetings, it's like, yay, this is the time. But it really is partially the time, but also before getting to the meeting is the time to also ask additional questions. If there's going to be information requested of the, the district leading up to the work session, so that when we get to the official business meeting, we're not rehashing the things that should have been done, like in the work session. So I don't know if that, I don't know if that's clear, but.
Yeah, it is, thank you. So when do we talk to each other?
Anytime.
I mean, because we can't meet like more than five of us, because then it's considered a meeting. So when, when do we talk?
So Karina, give me a call, how about that? But if, or call the, call the board president. When I want to talk about something and I'm not sure where it needs to go, I'll start there. If I know it's board kind of business as opposed to the school district. If it's anything that's dealing with operations, that's Dr. Thomas's world, and she owns it. And so we might have some ideas about it, but we can't tell her how to run the district. That's not our work.
Right.
The goal here is to, again, chances are the things on your list, we live in the same community. They might be on a list already, because we have a list of things that we want to address as a board, and we started that not only with this board, but even Friday's board. Run it by somebody. Look, Kisha knows what's on the list, I know what's on the list, some of the things on the list, talk to each other. So we can talk to each other one-on-one anytime. The problem comes when you try and build a forum or walk-in forum, that, that's silly. But, yeah, we can talk to each other.
I would like to, Karina, I would also like to say, I know when I first joined the board, I had a lot of questions and things I wanted to know about, and the first patient that Dr. Thomas is planning soon with you board members, where you would get to meet members of the cabinet. You know, I had an opportunity to ask a lot of good questions at that time, because it was the board members and the persons who are in leaderships of those areas. So I think also if you could, you know, start, you know, thinking about those questions for each of those areas, that would be a very good time that you may be able to, you know, sort some of your, your answers out as well.
Okay.
And Ms. Gallagher, and actually all the new board members, I just wanted to point out, Dr. Yeager posted in the chat the agenda-setting procedures that are part of Policy DC. And if you haven't already, I'd encourage you to go ahead and start, I mean, the, the policy manual is pretty big, but you probably want to start with the B section of the policy manual, because that's, that's board operations, and that's the stuff you probably want to know first.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I was just thinking more of community building at the end of my question, because I don't, I mean, if we're going to be sitting around making all these major decisions together, I'd, I'd really like to. Hey, how you doing?
It's a balance of that, Karina. It's a balance of that.
Well, and the reason you can't, Ms. Gallagher, is, is, you know, we are subject to Open Meetings Act, and there's Well, and the reason you can't, Doc, uh Ms. Gallagher is is, you know, we are subject to open meetings act and there's only certain things you can do uh without them being public and and almost all of those, you still have to have a publicly called meeting and then go into executive session. So I mean, that's a balance that's been struck for us by the Georgia General Assembly of, you know, we favor government in the open. It's a sunshine law.
And my final word on it is, you know, when I came on the board, I didn't have that privilege of going around and meeting everybody in the cabinet. That that wasn't, that never happened for me. But I did have Ovita. And so the good news is after every board meeting, Ovita and I would go get coffee or something and she would help me understand what was happening in the meeting and stuff like that. That helped me tremendously. And then as I got to know board members, you know, I could call anybody that uh would talk to me. So that was, that worked. And so again, I think that we even talked about mentoring in some regard and that might be something that you can be one of the stewards for, shepherds for. And I think Tish has done a great job of that part uh in an unofficial, unofficially with you guys even before you came on the board. So I think this is an opportunity for us to become the model board that we want to be. And I think it's time for us to try some new things. I'm excited about that opportunity.
Thank you, Karina, for those questions. I don't, um I definitely, you know, want our new members to feel that you can ask questions and you can ask, you know, these types of. But we, I still have questions and Mr. Brew will tell you, you know, sometimes, you know, all of us have to be just guided on back or whatever. Say, you know, consult, say, hey, Mike, you know, what about this or what about that? But um there is a lot of, you know, work to be done. There are a lot of relationships to be built. And so it it is, it's like a learning curve that I think we're all still um on, to be quite frank, at least I am, in figuring out how do I maximize um, you know, my power and my role as a board member while staying within um sort of the 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 definition of 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 what my my role should be. And so as Dr. Maddox said, I know you all have um local new member orientation. Is it next week? I think it is.
Twenty, i- is it the twenty-fifth? Let me look.
I don't think it's the twenty.
I probably just made that up. Don't listen to me. It's the twentieth.
The twentieth, okay. And so, and so as Dr. Maddox mentioned, there'll be uh like an orientation and uh Dr. Dykman, myself and Dr. Maddox, I think, um sat in on a similar orientation that was really helpful. Um and then we'll also share a few things about just general like a board overview. And then I think two of you all also have the state new member orientation uh left, I think, right? Um and so, so hopefully with that information and really just continuing to ask questions like you have and and we're we're, we're learning together. Um hopefully, you know, we'll, we we figure it out.
Awesome. Are we at that time on the agenda?
We are. We're at eleven-one.
I'm hoping that we adjourn.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion at ten-thirty-five to adjourn. Who was that second by?
Nicole.
Okay, um attorney Hall. So the motion by Ms. Davis, the second by attorney Hall. Um I don't see any objections. And so we are adjourned at ten-thirty-five PM.
The votes resign.
Yes, we do. Be safe.
Have a good evening.